What problem is? Can I have the top one? Oh, there it is. Welcome to the open mayor and council meeting. Today is September the eighth, 2023. This meeting is being held in accordance with the open public meetings law duly announced, advertised, and posted in the municipal building. The meeting will be adjourned, I'm going to speak tonight, sorry. The meeting will adjourn at 10 o'clock PM unless a majority of the council members that are present vote to extend the time. Please stand for the pledge. And before we do the pledge, please look at your cell phone and put it on mute or turn it off. We're going to do the pledge and then stand for a moment of silence. I pledge.
Let me introduce the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And during the moment of silence, please think about all those people who have been killed or hurt or injured or family members in the earthquakes throughout the world. Please be seated. Mayor Schwager?
Here.
Councilman Kamala?
Here.
Councilman McCann?
Here.
Councilman Pigmentelli?
Here.
Councilman Salani?
Here.
Councilman Zuzinski?
Here.
Councilman Tullamini?
Here.
So we're going to deviate a little bit so you understand. We had a special meeting right before the public meeting, but it was public, but it was special, so that we could appoint a new attorney. The new attorney is Matthew Gilson from the Wiener Law Firm. The motion was made by Councilman Steve Salani. It was seconded in by Councilman Kevin Zuzinski. The council all voted, and it was unanimous vote. So welcome to our new attorney of Oakland. Welcome. And at this time, I give my report. And then I'm going to start with good news, because we always start with, you know, not so good news, but good news is Indian Hills students are fabulous. Many of you know that over the years, I have been the attorney coach for the mock trial team up at Indian Hills High School. And there's been a teacher coach with the same, you know, with the team. And this year, our team has successfully gone through the playoff round. And just so you know, the mock trial team in Bergen County, there were 25 schools that began. Kevin's son was in one of the teams when, you know, we played together.
And you beat us that year.
Yes. And 25 schools signed up. We had a few rounds. Our third round was last night. That was the playoff round. We were seated, and we won the trial. And tomorrow night, our Indian Hills High School is in the semifinals of Bergen County. So congratulations to the students. Fabulous. It's just remarkable.
Where does it take place?
At the courthouse in Hackensack. So the students get to be in an actual courthouse. There are judges who are attorneys, two judges for every trial. They are in the courthouse. They have to abide by the rules. And it is just amazing to watch these wonderful students from Indian Hills High School. I'm just so proud of them. So I had to start with that. And we have some major issues. Patriots Way Bridge is one issue, which you will hear from our attorney tonight. Giant gimmick. But just so you know, I've been in close contact with our assemblyman, Bob Orth. I speak to him daily about the bridge. I've called our congressman, I'm not saying his name because Councilman Pigmentelli says I don't pronounce his name right. Could you please say his name?
Senator Pashkrow.
Thank you. And, but I speak to his aide, Ian, that's easier to say. We're working on the bridge, but you will get a full report from our engineer tonight. But in addition, we have Kevin Boswell from Boswell Engineering. And in lieu of my giving a message tonight, Kevin is going to speak about, and I hope everybody's listening at home, he's going to speak about our water issues, and we're going to open it up for questions because he's the professional. You ask us, we give you answers that we hear from our professionals. We're council people, we're attorneys. I don't think we have any engineers up here. No. So we have our engineer. So Kevin, please come up to the microphone and speak. And again, it's going to be after he speaks, we are opening it up for questions to Kevin, our engineer.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, members of the public. I'm Kevin Boswell of Boswell Engineering, and I am involved with the water system work that's being done, water and sanitary sewer system that's being done in the borough. I work with Giselle Diaz, who is our department head of our water waste water department. We call it water waste water engineering, sanitary engineering. So Giselle and I work on a daily basis with Rich Coons and Borough Council on every facet of the water system. So the mayor contacted me last week, said at the last meeting, there were some questions relating to the wells and the installation of treatment systems to treat for PFAs. So I don't know how far you want me to go back, but PFAs are a federal and state regulated contaminant. And the state of New Jersey began enacting standards for PFNA, PFOA, PFOS several years ago. In 2020, they introduced a standard. The federal standard is 70 parts per trillion. It's a guideline. It's not a standard. In fact, if you just read an article about Wisconsin in the paper last week, you'll see that they're having much, much higher standards. And the Wisconsin state standard is the federal guideline of 70 parts per trillion, what we refer to as combined. State of New Jersey has the fourth highest standard in the country. It is 13 parts per trillion, 13 for one contaminant, 13 for another one, and 14 for another one. They began regulating them, as I said, in 2020. And what they do is they base it on what they refer to as the running annual average. So if you, if you, if the standard is, let's say, 13, and in the first quarter, you are greater than four times that 13, you fail for the year. If you're twice over two quarters, you fail for the year. In the case of that first regulated contaminant during 2020, you did not fail. I believe it was PFNA. And in 2021, PFOA and PFOS, you began to fail one well, another well, and one well being well five, another well being well nine. And then well 10, we were directed to put PFA treatment systems on all three wells. We were required, when we failed, to send out public notices to every customer that the borough services. That was done within a 30-day time period. We were also required to file what's referred to as a remedial measures report, an RMR, which addresses the contaminants and talks about how you're going to implement things on a certain guideline. We'll note that the RMR has a time limit of 12 months, which is frankly unachievable, given the practical difficulties of designing and permitting the systems for both water treatment as well as land use at DEP. And lastly, the lead times for these units are prohibitive. We're putting in these treatment systems currently on five different municipally-owned water systems. The one that is about to be brought online had a one-year lead time on securing those units. So, and it's actually had a delay on actually getting, in this case, it was a carbon treatment system, and had about a four to six-week delay in actually getting the carbon delivered in a set of treatments. There were two technologies that are economically viable. One is carbon, granular activated carbon. The other one is ion exchange, also referred to as resin. There's benefits and downsides to each one. We presented the benefits and downsides of each technology to the borough last year, and early last year, and they decided to go with carbon, which frankly, a lot of water systems are going with. There's a number of different advantages to doing that, but one of the main advantages is that the carbon systems are larger than the ion exchange resin units, so that if the standards ever get increased again, which they could be, you could take a carbon system and convert it to an ion exchange system, and it actually treats to a higher level. So we know that Bridgewater Water is going with carbon for that exact reason on a number of things. We collaborate with a number of different water systems. As I said, we're working on five separate systems right now. In the case of wells five, which is down by the DPW, nine, which is along the Almond Brook on 287 and 10, which is at the end of Spruce Lane, we applied for and received what we call water system, the water permits, back in September of last year. And we, during that time, we were going back and forth and securing the specifics of the design. And once we received those permits, then we were able to pursue the land use permits. You don't pursue the land use permits until you've got the water permit in hand. So we started negotiating the requirements of each of those three locations. Well, number five is the least challenging from a regulatory perspective for land use because it's in an area that it's in flood plain, but it's not in wetland areas, transition areas, things of that nature. So it was a relatively straightforward application to get that application in. That application was submitted in December of last year, December 15th, I believe the date was. Nine and 10 are actually quite a bit different. They required a lot of negotiation with the DEP. As part of, when we do these applications, there's a, there is negotiation in what permits you need to apply for. We went back and forth, and I can tell you, it's easily a dozen times, probably on the order of 20 times, where there was exchanges back and forth as to what permits that we would have to apply for. Once they were nailed down, the detailed permits were prepared. And I'm pleased to report that both of them were uploaded yesterday to the state's website. So, and I believe you, Rich received confirmation either yesterday or today. There's a permit fee that needs to go in now. They tell you the fee within 24 hours of submitting it. Next step that occurs is, as I said earlier, there's a, the entire country is currently putting systems in. In fact, the state of California cornered the market on GAC, Granular Activated Carbon, late last year, and that caused a lot of the delays that we're seeing over here at the end of last year. So we went back and knowing that we're in that 60 to 120-day period of securing those land use permits, we went back and last week and requested pricing, current pricing, current lead times on the units that you specified, which are the Calgon GAC units. We received that information earlier today. We reviewed it, and the lead time on the units, allowing a little bit of time, extra time for back and forth on shop drawings that need to be submitted, is about eight and a half months. So we went through and we reviewed the construction schedule, the project schedule of how this all works, because the other part that's going on right now is that the DEP has advised that all these water systems are going to be presented with something called an administrative consent order, which means you're going to have to perform by dates specified in the agreement. And as long as you do, there's obviously no issue. So we're trying to do everything we can to compress the timeline to bring these units online. So we went through an analysis of the project schedule as well as the lead times to procure the units, as well as providing a lead time to get the carbon put in. Because what happens is, it's between a seventh and an eight-month period if the contractor has readily, if the units are readily available to the contractor. Contractor starts with a first month or so of submittals, then he orders everything, then the piping and what have you. There are normal delays in getting all that information. Come about the fifth month, that's when the contractor needs to get the units. The contractor, the units are brought on, the piping is brought on, everything is rigged up, the heat tape is attached to all of the external piping. These are external units. They're not put in a structure. There's no separate structure. They rest on a concrete pad. And then they're all insulated. Obviously, the power needs to be brought in, really just for the insulation. There's no real, it's a filter. So it's a filter that comes out of the well under pressure, goes through the filter under pressure, goes out. The borough has elected while they're doing these upgrades to also put in generator backup power. So as we did the land use permitting, we now also have to do the land use permitting in these regulated areas for nine and 10 for the generators, which, by the way, have their own lead time issues. I think they're about, what are they, about nine months now?
Six plus.
Yeah. So, but that lead time does not impact your ability to bring the units online. That affects, that's a separate issue. So a thing that we've been looking at, and a thing that I did a detailed analysis on today and provided it to Rich Coons, is that we think that you should take the necessary steps at this time to order the units via purchase order. And that would allow you to effectively bring those units on five months into the construction schedule at the exact time when the contractor is going to be needing it, and then you don't lose any time. If you were to wait and put it in, and the contract would be set up that the borough is procuring the units, the contractor would take those units and rig those up. In fact, that's exactly what we just did at the Elmwood Park Well Field, a 3 million gallon a day plant that's providing water for City of Garfield. And that system is being brought online by March 31st. There's an ACO for that project. I would note, we're doing the exact same thing in the township of Mawa, Hawthorne, Hohokis, Waldorf, all, every water system, and Bridgewater Water, as I talked about earlier, is going through this.
Excuse me, I'm misunderstanding something. I thought we can't purchase unless we do an emergency purchase.
Yes.
But then you're saying we should purchase it anyway?
We are recommending that, given the fact that there is an ACO that would be coming down, that you, for purposes of procuring the units themselves, that you declare an emergency and you issue a purchase order that would allow you to effectively get the units and about...
So it would still be via the emergency purchasing?
Yeah, it would be emergency purchasing measure to get the units on a quicker basis. It requires us to review all the documents and basically say that if you were to bid this as part of the project, it would delay the project, and the delay would be approximately four and a half months. I did the analysis today. I provided all of that information to Mr. Coons. I'm sorry I didn't call you mayor.
Well, why didn't we know this before?
We were always looking at it as an option, but we didn't have all of the dates lined up. So we were looking at that, but it wasn't appropriate to do that until now, because frankly, we have all the land use permits in, we're looking at getting the project underway, like I said, and I would say, project is probably going to be out to bid in anywhere from 90 to 150 days. I would say it's probably closer to 90 or 120 days. And we know, as of today, the lead time is six weeks for submittals and seven months for lead time after the submittals are approved. We know that's the current lead time. And frankly, the lead times are changing weekly with Calgon as well as the other provider, a company called ECT Two. They change on a regular basis. But we are going to be recommending that you entertain, when you get the ACO, we believe that when you see the dates that are involved, that you would follow our recommendation in order to procure these units under that measure. I would note, the plans, the specifications, and the permits issued to date all specifically reference Calgon as the provider, as the manufacturer. Their tanks are, I believe, 10-foot diameter. And if we went to a different manufacturer, namely this company, ECT Two, that tank would be 12 feet in diameter, which would affect the footprint of the land use permitting, of the slab that is in the environmentally regulated areas. So I was trying to get two quotes for the same thing, like to like, and see if the state would allow that. But the problem is with the land use permitting, declaring an emergency to procure those units in that manner. I did, that's what we did on this other project at Garfield. It worked well, and we're recommending that you follow the same general process.
So, council, questions before we let anybody from the...
If I could just ask a quick question. You said something kind of interesting here. You said that Elmwood Park is going to have their system fired up on March 31st.
It'll be before then, that's an EAC. I'm trying to be careful with the dates.
Okay. Well, my question is, what is different between Elmwood Park and Oakland? Why do we have to wait till November of 2024, 23?
Oh, they started their system, they ordered the units in August of 2021. At that time, the delay was over a year to get the units. They had six cylinders, whereas you have two. It's a much larger system. And it's not an environmentally regulated area, but it's a much different stage of construction. It's virtually done. We're waiting on the carbon to be put into the units. Piping is done, insulation, heat tapes, hold on.
And Kevin, just to clarify that, when did Elmwood Park go into violation on their average? Was it in the first quarter of 2021?
They went into violation on the first quarter of 2021, yes. Yes. Yeah, that's what...
That's why I could, it was nine months ahead.
Everybody's moving at the same speed. There's no, the fact that Oakland's wells, as well as Mawa's wells, and one of Hohokis' wells, and two of Waldorf's wells are both in these, what we refer to as highly regulated areas. They're in wetlands or in transition areas. And so it does very much complicate the land use permitting aspect. The water permitting part is pretty straightforward. As I said, well number five, the water permits were gotten in September for all of them, but the, and the land use permit for well number five went in shortly thereafter.
So I guess another question, since you just brought up the timeframe, why was the recommendation not made to order the equipment in September, October, after we had a construction progress?
Because you wanted to get a feel for the entire project, and you wanted to know where you were with getting the land use permits. And as soon as we put the land use permits in, we determined that if we don't do it this way, we're going to add four months of delays just with supply chain. So, I mean, now is the exact time you should be doing it, and now's when we did it.
So I guess my question then is, so what is your projected timeline for completion of this job?
January of '24, 11 months from now.
And what, has the ACO been issued already for our wells at this time?
There's a draft ACO that's floating around between your water provider, but I saw reference to it, I didn't see it yet. But I've been told it's coming by, it's a department, DEP, called enforcement. Same people, Allison Campbell, Don Hirsch, same people, you know, we dealt with on many occasions.
So once we get the ACO, so we haven't officially received the ACO currently, correct?
No, you haven't.
Okay. Once we get this, the clock starts running, how much time do we have to complete this work?
I think what Rich and I were talking about today, I think we're going to recommend that you be given a time of March of '24 to give you some time if there are delays that are outside of your control that relate to supply chain issues. And then I think that those, I would recommend you go with a March 31 of '24 deadline in the ACO. That would be my recommended deadline.
Right.
And just so you know, that's how we got to March 31 of '23 with Garfield, because we believe that we may be able to get it up and operating as soon as the first week of March.
So is it safe to say that Mawa and Oakland are sharing the same issues when it comes to stream recrosion of wetlands?
Yeah, Mawa has a different issue. Their well is in the floodway, so everything has to be placed on piles, with a concrete slab on a peer-supported system. So we actually, we're going with a different system that is actually lower and wider because it's going to be hard to fill it, because it's up in the air. And then you have generators too, that are also, you know, it...
It's a different animal, I understand.
It's a very different animal, you know, and the, some of the things that you have, you want a diesel tank, you want a diesel belly tank, we've got to make sure, we were going through the runtimes, which determines how long, how long and wide the belly tank is, which means how big the slab is.
But the generator process will not prevent us from moving forward with the water treatment, correct? Or do they have to run in parallel?
It prevented you from moving forward with the land use application. It does not prevent you at all from getting the treatment system online as of now.
You said we could do that before the generators.
Yeah, that's what we're doing, and we're doing that all over.
Is the generator just a backup? Excuse me.
Yes, yes.
That's fine.
Yeah, and it's a diesel belly tank generator that... Yeah, it's, and it's a, it's a diesel belly tank generator that, we generally recommend seventy-two hours because they go off and on. So, and that gives you plenty of time to get to it over the weekend.
I just have one more question about permitting. When did the permitting process start for the land use permits? When did you get that?
Now.
When did you start that?
Now.
Started now?
Yeah, it's a thirty-day, it's a thirty-day completion review, and it's a ninety-day timeline to issue the permit. That's why I said it's a sixty to one hundred and twenty day period when we expect the, the permits. Because if you take the long times, you get a hundred and twenty days. If you take the shorter times, you get thirty days to deem complete, thirty days to thirty and ninety days, you're going to get the permit.
Was there any reason that we couldn't have done this back in September or October?
We were still negotiating the, the, the land use requirements back in October, November, December. And we were also looking at the generators and, you know, incorporating them into the design. In fact, is it well, is it well nine that has?
No, he said one.
The well number nine also has electrical work that we were putting into it as well, but that's, it, it affected the generator design, it doesn't affect the land use part. So we're still doing retrofitting of electrical as part of the upgrading of that well.
So I have no further question. So compared to other towns that you know about, that, that, that this has occurred in, you know, we failed, failed the, the inspection, would you say we're, we're moving along as, as equally, you know, as other towns are? Are we, are we at the same pace? Are we at a slower pace, a quicker pace? Are we behind schedule, you know?
You, you are, well, number five is pretty easy. Well, numbers nine and har, and ten are difficult applications from a land use perspective, and you are moving at the same pace as the other water systems despite being in highly regulated areas. You're category one waterway down on, on well number ten. It's a category one waterway.
Just repeat for everybody where, where the wells are that are, that are-
Well, number ten is at the end of Spruce, and Spruce is down by Portabellos. Spruce is the, by the bowling alley, the industrial area down there.
Close to the river?
No.
It's, it's, well, yes. It, it's close to a waterway that ties to the river, and it has repair and buffers, and it's a category one waterway. That affects that particular well. And, and, and well number nine is along the element brook, and similarly has wetland and other issues associated with it. And there's, there's some details that, there, we have two people in our office that are really specialists in just environmental permitting. And they went through a lot of negotiation to simplify the permits with the reviewing agents at DEP for both of those wells. And that's, that was a lot of the last forty-five days to sixty days of what was going on. And, and frankly, we're also bringing in the generators too. The generators have been sized, that, that was a relatively recent arrival as well. But we have pads for them worked into the land use application. So it's, they're not simple applications at all. And Waldwick has two wells that are actually very difficult as well, and, and they're, they're proceeding at the same rate.
So, thank you. Kevin, so we're in comparison, right, with the three towns, the same timeframe, you're looking at potentially putting the ACO for 331, right? Is there anything we could have done differently in hindsight? Is there, was there anything you would change in this?
No.
No?
No. I, 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 the people who are doing this are very experienced in doing it. And I don't know how to say it any differently. I mean, I, I can, you've done, you've done everything right. You do a lot of things right in operating your, your water and your sewer utilities. It's, I don't know what else I can say.
So if there's nobody else up here, if anybody would like to add?
I have one more question. Ms. Roswell, you said that well five is just a simple floodplain application, which is filed on December 15th.
Yes.
If we get approval on that, on that in the next thirty days, okay, and we order the equipment and everything else like that, is there anything, is there any advantage to saying, hey, if this is an easy one to lay up, get this one in first while we wait for the other two?
I, I, I don't think that saves you. I think the benefit, that, the big benefit well five can do for you is to try to pull nine and ten along rather, rather than try to expedite five. It sounds a little strange, but wells nine and ten are going to require a site visit from DEP because there are wetlands involved. Just mark out delineations of wetlands and transition areas and things of that nature. It is better to have all three wells done in one day, I think, and what I've been told. It is better, we believe, to have everything done in one day with the same person who comes up, sees everything and, and goes through it, and then we, we just move all three of them at the same time. That, that was part of the idea, and that's why you saw nine and ten go in on one day.
So I guess one more question. With that being said, in your experience, have you ever seen DEP decline a land use application for an emergency water treatment plan?
DEP is not going to decline it. They may ask us to do some modifications. I wouldn't be surprised if they did. But whatever they ask us to do, it's, it's going to happen within that hundred and twenty days at a maximum.
Thank you.
So that's a hard date.
Anybody else? So now, would anybody like to ask, I mean, Mr. Dean, would you like to ask Mr. Roswell for anything?
We're a team, is that okay?
I apologize, I'm sorry, of course.
Do you want us to get a?
Yes, because of the microphone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dean Trevissani, I live at two-
And Joyce Trevissani.
I thought you'd go later, my name. And we live at two zero seven Ramapo Valley Road, right next to Spruce Street. So pardon me for saying, but I do realize that the, there is a little brook that does go into the, the river, and that's why I said it wasn't as close, whatever. Anyway. There's a couple of questions I have. I think, and my wife has probably got a few more, but just so you know, I did talk to Ashley Windawi, actually, today, and this afternoon. And she said she looked through because Kevin Tercero, Tercario was great. He gave me the block and lot numbers and, and the addresses of all the wells. So I, I shared that with Ashley, and she was able to look up, and she had not seen it in, in the computer.
These are people at the DEP?
Yeah, these are people at the Department of, DEP Land Use or whatever, Watershed. But she had not seen it yet in there. So I'm, I'm hoping that it's just been delayed in the processes?
Not been delayed, I can tell you I have emails from DEP that I've got received.
Okay, all right, I can tell you the-
You're going to have to go to the microphone.
Is there a microphone?
It's in the-
It's in the, yeah.
Look, you're tall, so we'll-
And I'm assuming that they received it because they also sent us bills. Yeah, it's, it's, it's a computer upload, and it takes several hours to do. And then you get a confirmation. And when we got that confirmation, I forwarded that to Mr. Coons.
Okay. And also, I did discuss with her also about coming and visiting the sites. She said that, you know, once the information was received and, and input into the system, that, that's probably something that she's probably going to have to do. So that kind of validates what you were telling us. I was also asking her why this wasn't done earlier, why she wasn't asked to come visit the sites earlier to look them over so that she could get a clear understanding of what in fact needed to be done, if there were any adjustments to what your proposals were. And she said she could not answer that because that's more based on what the town is, should be doing or providing us.
Well, I, 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 I'll come over here. Mr., is it Trevissani?
Trevissani.
Trevissani. I, I can tell you emphatically that she has been going back and forth in writing with our, I believe, more like twenty. I'm probably underestimating the number of exchanges that have occurred with this person. And it's a complicated permit. She has been, you know, maybe, if she didn't tell you, I don't know why, but I can tell you that we have been in contact with her in writing, and it's, it's part of what we did as part of getting this application put together.
Have you took, you, and you've talked to her on the phone as well?
I don't talk to our permitting people, though. I've seen the emails back and forth.
Because I will tell you, the other thing is that so far I've had three conversations with her. And each one of them, when she wasn't available, when I left a message, she literally called me back both times in fifteen minutes. So I had to, I, that's maybe why I have a good rapport with her. As well as my wife talked with the gentleman from the DEP, and he responded, same day or next day?
Same day.
Stay up there.
And, and so we were able to get through and get some things done, which, I mean, when I say get things done, at least we got some answers to things. And I just wonder why it has taken so long to get to this point, to be honest with you. And I understand, I'm not an engineer, I don't understand it, but there's just questions in my mind why this is happening. Let me move on. I was told that all of our wells come together, so, and then it's pushed out to the town. Is that correct?
All of your wells?
All of the wells come to a central location, and then the water's distributed, they mix together?
The wells would mix in water tanks, but they are three separate, what we refer to as points of entry. So no, they don't come together in any other way except to go to a, a water tank.
Well, then-
And a water tank is-
Six, seven, and eight does that.
Well, then that upsets-
Yes.
Yeah, we live by nine.
That, that upsets me a lot because then that, I was lied to, okay? And that upsets me.
I don't think you were lied to, maybe we all get different-
I was told, I was told, excuse me, specifically, let me, let me, I was told specifically because I'm near well ten, okay? And that appears to be the worst one, all right? And so I was told, well, it's okay because it's mixed with wells, all the other wells, so that it dilutes it.
We heard this last time.
All right, that's what I was told, and that's why I asked the question. Now I'm being told that's not the case.
Mr. Trevissani, I, first, I, let's, you were asking questions about why we did what we did in terms of preparing all the, the applications. I've answered everything that I can. And you spoke to the same people who were reviewing the applications. And there's, I mean, I don't think you're hearing anything different than what I'm-
Asking you necessarily about that, I'm asking the council.
But I'm, but I'm also-
Because that's where I got my initial information from.
But I'm trying to, I'm trying to get to a second point. I will be happy to take the operations of the water system, the wells, and if, if the mayor and council allow me to, I will be happy to share it with you as an individual. It's not normally done to show you how everything works because I don't know what your interpretation is. I don't know what you were told. I don't know who told it to you, when they told it to you, but we tell-
And I appreciate that.
We tell the truth, and, and, you know, there seems to be like, there seems to be like-
I think that came up when people in a certain section of town wanted to know, are they, are they using water from a specific well?
I was told by, by Mr. Coons that the wells come together. And that it's, and that it's mixed together so that it reduces the amount of PFOS from, from one well.
Which Mayor Schwager actually confirmed two weeks ago. Yes, that's what we were told.
That could absolutely be the case.
Because my, my next question was going to be then, if all of them come together at one particular point, why can't we then put one filter to clean up all of it instead of having each individual? And again, that, and it doesn't work that way. And now I understand that, but I was, it was miscommunicated to me.
And to us, not just to you.
And that's a problem.
Yes, it is a problem.
This is a huge problem. Communication is key in any organization, okay? And it really upsets me.
So Mr. Trevissani, what I suggest is, is that we meet with you if you, to address this specific issue.
But it's not just that, it's not just that, Kevin.
But I would also caution, please, but I would also caution the mayor and council. You, there are details that you just don't share with, with the public in terms of this particular asset. If it's to address a specific concern, a water system is a critical asset. Any water system or sanitary sewer system doesn't just share the details of this asset out in public. It's not the right thing to do for security reasons. I'm happy to, and I have to, I have to say it this way because you want to protect the security of this asset. You don't want to show vulnerabilities of what your water system is to the world. So if there's something we can address, I'm happy to do that and address it thoroughly and honestly and openly. But I, this is not the way to, to address this particular concern respectfully.
And I understand to an extent. I'm going to ask another question. Was it communicated that adding a generator to the, was it communicated prior to that adding a generator might delay things if we went forward without adding a generator?
I don't know.
Would that have, would we have been able to move forward quicker?
I, I don't know the answer to, would it have allowed you to move forward quicker? I can tell you that from a land use perspective, if you want to put a pad for a generator, it needs to be on the permit application. So that part of it, yes. I don't know when we were told to add the generator in. I don't know who told us to put it in. I don't know if it was DEP who told us to put it in. I can't answer that question here. I can find out the answer.
But, but that's, I think that's a good question, is could we have put in for these to be completed earlier? If it wasn't, if we didn't need the generator? And then potentially, if we found out maybe, maybe a year down the road, you know, say, hey, can we add a generator and then go through the process of doing that and adding to the pad or whatever you need to do at that point? But it would then potentially expedite the process for getting, bringing these to fruition. So, all right, Mr. Kumala actually beat me to the other questions about when we're going to probably get these done. January 2024, probably actually being usable in March of 2024?
Yes.
Okay.
But, but we're recommending ACO be, be stated to say March 31st of 2024.
But you said probably January 2024.
Yeah, we're, we're, we believe it's an eleven-month process.
My, my dear wife had some questions as well.
I have only one, one question for you. You said there are two systems, carbon and the ion system, and you went through the benefits and the downsides of both, and that you chose carbon. When was that decision made?
It was either early, it was probably, it was sometime in early 2022.
Okay, at that time, what, what delayed the request for permits? Because at that time, you did, you did or you did not have the initial permits approved. No, it was September.
Yes.
When the initial water permits were approved.
What I stated was there were no delays.
Okay, so here's the thing.
I don't know.
When I called the DEP, it took all of one phone call, and the gentleman got back to me in fifteen minutes to explain that this carbon system that was chosen is the one that has the long lead time. There is a shortage of these because there are so many systems being put in all over the place. And therefore, this emergency request or emergency PO could have been requested months ago.
To what end?
To get this system in much sooner.
You wouldn't have permits to put it in. You would have to store it.
But what you said was the lead time would be-
Eight and a half months.
Eight and a half months, but in five months, the contractor needs the units.
And he won't be able to, but he won't be able to bid the project until we have the permits.
And those permits were not uploaded until yesterday.
The most recent permits were uploaded yesterday for land use permits for, I'm sorry, am I missing something? I've, I've told you in no uncertain terms-
Those were my questions. That's, that's all I wanted to know.
Okay, so-
That's what happened.
Today, today is February 8th. It was uploaded February 7th. It will take between sixty and one hundred and twenty days to receive the permit, okay? So let's, let's say ninety days. So that means on May 7th, we will have the permit. That means you, then you can bid it. And in five days, five months from that date, assuming everything goes right, the contractor will be in a position to be able to take the, the units and install them. If you order them today, they're going to arrive at the same time. That's, that's what I told-
If you ordered them two months ago, would they have arrived earlier?
They could have, if you ordered them two months ago, first of all, a year ago, the lead time was a year for these units. Six months ago, the lead time was considerably less. As of right now, the lead time is two to three weeks to get some middles, and twenty-six to twenty-eight weeks to take delivery of the units. And I've added another, I believe it's four weeks on, to allow for exchanges of changes. And, and so I, I made it eight and a half months. This allows the units to arrive at the same time when they are needed. So I did, if you order them early, you are effectively ordering something that you need to then take and store somewhere.
So we store it.
But you, 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 now is the time when you're doing, not three, four, or five months ago. I, I don't understand, I, I-
Those were my only questions regarding engineering.
We just want to find out, and we want to let the town know what the processes are, what they've been, and we want to be able to communicate that, so that they understand somewhat what's going on with the situation. Now, my concern, again, I'm a well ten guy. That means I have been ingesting the highest level of PFOS chemicals for the past twenty-seven years, living in my home. I'm concerned, because, like I said last meeting, I am suffering many of the health issues that are listed in your pamphlet, and which were listed in my wife's
Research.
Research. And I'm upset, I know, you know, I'm really upset, because I felt like I was, it was miscommunicated in what I was told. Now, fortunately, I have a system going in next Wednesday. All right, I have a reverse osmosis filter going into my house next Wednesday.
Do you want me to explain?
Because, go ahead, please.
Okay, so, the fact that we are living and raising children in this area, we both were born and raised in Oakland, drinking the same water, and now we know what's in it and what it can cause. We tried first a zero pitcher, there's a number on the market of pitchers that will reduce the PFOS and PFOA in your water, but not your ice cubes, and not your, you know, pot on your stove, et cetera. We, we purchased this pitcher, and it comes with a DDS monitor, which is, you know, TDS monitor, total dissolved solvent monitor. And you will measure your tap water, and then measure the water after it's filtered by this wonderful pitcher. The tap water, and this is all dissolved solvents, not just PFOAs and PFOS. The tap water in Oakland measures four hundred and one parts per million. When it's filtered, it goes way down to about zero point ten parts per million, but the manufacturer of this product says it should be zero, 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 and that you should replace the filter when it reaches zero, zero, six. Ours never reaches zero, zero, six. It never goes that low. And after using this filtered water for about a week, a week and a half, it reaches the point oh one five point. And I look at the manufacturer's information, and it shows what parts of the country, how long you can expect for these filters to actually be effective. In a week to ten days, we get, in this area of the country, twenty-five to forty gallons supposedly in this pitcher, that's definitely not what we got. And we have to replace this filter about once a week, once to every ten days, just for drinking water. That's not for all the other stuff. So, best price I could find for those, buying them four at a time, was about forty-nine ninety-nine, so twelve fifty. And I'm not the first person on Facebook sharing that this is an issue. We tried this, we filtered our water, now we have to filter it every week to ten days, and it's very, very costly. The, the next step is the reverse osmosis system, which, as you said, is even way, way more costly over time. And that will enable us to have drinking water, ice cubes, water for, you know, boiling, cooking, et cetera.
Excuse me, are you saying that if you take the tap water-
Yep.
And make ice cubes?
Yes. Well, no, your refrigerator has an ice cube maker in it.
Oh, I, oh, okay.
It's using tap ma, tap water for that.
Okay.
So, even though we could filter the water, if I put ice cubes in any drink, I'm using that, that same water. So, really, homeowners have, for this period of time, in the town of Oakland, New Jersey, who pay taxes for this water system to have clean drinking water, have the choice of installing a reverse osmosis system at a large cost to themselves, or to continue drinking this water. Which is shown scientifically to be harmful. So, that's, that's kind of, and, and when we did contact the Department of Environmental Protection, I was told exactly the things that you have said here today. I was told that there are parts on back order, you cannot get them, all these different places are trying to install these granular activated carbon systems. So there's a shortage of them at this point in time. There are, you know, obviously, if there, there's a shortage, there needs to be a time period for which, you know, they are ordered ahead. And yes, it, it should be considered an emergency.
You need to do whatever you can do, and you need to commu, I shouldn't say that. It needs to be communicated properly to the people of Oakland, what is going on. And it needs to be done in a way that is understandable, and not make up things if you don't know the fact. You're better off saying, I don't know, let me find out. I sell systems and things like that. I sell systems and things that, I'm not an engineer, I'm not in IT. So I, when I'm asked by the CFO or the CIT of a hospital that I deal with, what is this? I say, let me find out, and I get the right answers. Because right now, I feel, I feel upset that I've been, that things have been miscommunicated, all right? Because I was thinking, why not just do one system for the whole town? And apparently, it doesn't work that way. And I apologize if we sound short of patience or whatever, but you can understand that my health is potentially caused by maybe some of this, all right? And that, like I said last week, somebody has a cat that their doctor said, don't feed the cat the water from the tap, feed your cat bottled water. That really scares the living heck out of me, okay?
It's because animals bioaccumulate faster, so.
Okay, so, anyway, thank you for giving us the time to share this, and-
Thank you for sharing all your knowledge.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Travasani, I just want to comment a lot, thank you. I reached out to you the following day, and we had a conversation about this, and you said you were gonna be reaching out to DEP. And I also said I was gonna reach out to DEP. And I did actually find, the next day, I had the permits in hand, and discovered the date of the nineteenth, which, you know, we've been talking in the back office, trying to figure out, you know, where we were, which led to this conversation with Mr. Boswell, to figure out where we are. So I just want to let you know that your statements didn't fall on deaf ears. And, and right away, some of us, you know, paying tax, trying to figure out where we are, what's going on. So, so, yes, we are-
I appreciate that.
We hear, we hear your concern.
We are all working on different areas, not just going directly to DEP.
That's my area, too.
I'm concerned about the people in well ten, and their health, and everything else.
My office was there for how many years?
Absolutely.
And I've been drinking, I was drinking tap water, and I was under the impression of what you just said before, the same impression. So we will get into the bottom of that one.
I appreciate, and please, amongst yourselves, communicate with each other. You're all on the council, you're in this together, I don't care whether you're on the right, or you're on the left, it doesn't matter. Please, thank you.
Most of the people I've spoken to around town are very concerned with the fact that they have to buy bottled water, they have to buy fil, special filters, they, they have, it's expensive to live here, for a lot of, especially new homeowners that move to this area, for the obvious reasons. We have fabulous schools, we have fabulous rec programs, it is a wonderful, wonderful place to live and raise children. But when they're being, you know, reaching, those are mandatory notices that you have to send, right? But homeowners get them, and they're terrified. They're, they're giving their children these water, and-
Yes, there are seven of us up here who live in Oakland, we're elected officials. But we live in Oakland also, we have the same water and the same issues. So, we are getting, we are working, we are working. Just because we're not working out there, we're working behind the scenes, we are working. And we're all concerned, and we have children, and we are concerned. And many, I didn't realize this about pets, I just learned something tonight about their systems, that it's more dangerous for pets. But we, we are really working hard, and diligently as we can. And, and, you know, we, we all, we all, we speak to different people at DEP, we get different answers. We speak, I speak to the governor's office to work through DEP, I'm getting a different answer. I even went through our assemblyman, who is also backtracking another way. We are doing every avenue to get into the main agency, which is DEP, which is the controlling agency right now. And we're stuck with them, but we're working every way we can to get into there, so we all have the same goal, and to get clean water. We're trying.
Mr. and Mrs. Travasani, I agree with you on one thing, right, remove politics from it. And I know you personally, so I'll make it clear that, we can do a better job of communicating, and we need to focus on that. So I, I take your point valid, that we, we have to communicate better. Right? And even if we did okay, we gotta do better to get this, you shouldn't have to deal with what you're dealing with, just very straight up.
So my other question was, for the townspeople that are asking about the money that they have to spend in addition to drink safe water, are, are we, has the funding been secured for this entire project? And if not, are we going to see a tax implication for this project?
We are working on the budget as we speak, this is the time we're sitting down, the finance meeting, people have already had two meetings in a row, and we are working on that. To give, you don't want, as Dean said, we're not going to give you a guess, or I say something that we're not sure of, it's better that we tell you the truth.
Okay.
And we don't have the truth right this minute.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Because we're working on the budget.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
I just have one question for you, the Mr. Coons or Mr. Boswell.
With the quarterly notifications that go out on the water quality, is there anything to preclude the borough from putting in a, another sheet in there, talking about exactly what we're doing, and what the timeline is, and what's been accomplished? As a way for educating the public?
The, the notices themselves have to be approved by DEP before they get sent out. So, again, we can check and find out, as far as-
I went through the governor's office on that, and I said, how dare you require us to do these? I had people calling my law office upon receipt of that notice, demanding that we do the will that day, because they're dying. And I said, that's not how you treat people. And they had no idea what I was talking about. So that's what I'm saying, we're working with every way we can to get into the DEP. I asked Mr. Coons, I said, you have to send out that pamphlet? Let's send out a simple summary, just, as you said, full disclosure. He said, we'll be penalized by the DEP if they don't approve it.
And full disclosure, I, I would like to just say, apologize to the mayor and council this evening, because last week, Mr. Travasani and I spoke on, on the phone, and I said that we're working on trying to do something, what I was working on was declaring the emergency. And I said, I can't share it with you, because I hadn't yet shared it with the mayor and council. Analysis today, after receiving the, the weekly updates of the delays. I shared it with Mr. Coons, who was on a personal matter with a, with a family member, then I had to go on a personal matter. And then Mr. Coons and I spoke on the phone while we were in transit, coming from two different personal matters. I was trying to get to the point where I could talk here tonight about recommending the emergency, and communicate that. And I'm sorry that you're all hearing it for the first time.
It's okay, as long as it's done. The bottom line is, as we teach our children, as long as it's done, let's move forward.
And, and, and we are doing this in the most expedient manner that it can be done.
Let's just make sure we have-
I just said congressman, I bet.
The highest-
Councilman.
The highest priority we can do.
I can't believe I said that, sorry.
Pat, do you want to say something?
I just want to say, make sure we have the highest priority on every aspect. I know you're moving forward, but we don't want any more delays. We want to make sure, when we get permits, when the town gets permits, you notify us, because people are asking us. We can't, we can't wait until it reaches a crisis to, to, to communicate to the people.
Well, I could, I, I'm sure that we communicated that we had the water permits when we got them, but-
Let me tell you, I, I did not get the letter.
Okay, well-
It was addressed to the mayor and council.
I will send, I'll be happy to, to send out-
All right, we'll discuss that issue, yes. Councilman.
Thanks, Kevin. Just, I want to thank you for coming here a couple of weeks ago. Because your presence here a couple of weeks ago prompted action, because I'm fairly new here, and some of the stuff wasn't making sense. And it, and it goes to your issue of communication, something that was just discussed recently with, with Pat and Kevin. But what we discovered, and it was Councilman Kamala, we discovered that permits were issued, we weren't, I wasn't aware of the permits. Councilman Kamala sent me an email, he, he sent it to me, he said, is this a problem, and I said, oh, yeah, could be. So we started to look into it, because of you coming in. And it goes to the issue of communication, I'm not blaming anyone, because here's what we don't know. It came up, I, I don't want to disclose closed session issues, but here's what we're going to do about it. It's sort of, the, the letter itself, and the date of the letter causes questions. It's CC'd to the mayor and council, none of us got it. Okay, so, we need to know, I want to know, as an elected representative, so when I said to you last two weeks ago, we're gonna get to this issue and fix it, I want to know what broke down the communication, and we all want to know, it's not just me. We've all agreed unanimously that we need to find out what happened here. Generally, the way it works for the, the lawyers and the professionals know, when you send out a communication, and you put CC on the bottom, you are the person who sends out the CCs. Not, you don't distribute it to a municipality for them to distribute the CCs. That's generally protocol for anyone who does mail it, right, Kevin? I mean, so, we were CC'd on it, we never got it. So we, we asked our borough, our new borough attorney, baptism by fire, to investigate what happened with this mail.
We don't know where it went, because-
We don't know where it went.
Right, because we said usually the mail-
That's why, that's why I don't understand.
When it comes to the borough, it's stamped CC.
No, it was a hard, it was, it was a hard copy.
It goes to the mayor and council.
There was also email, I shouldn't-
Well, no, I, I ordered still open.
There was also email sent, and I was told it was the town engineer, Kevin Boswell, via email, and Richard Coons, the borough administrator. I was told by the DEP that these were the people notified when the initial permits were approved in September.
But we're talking about a particular letter, which pretty much says that, none of us have it.
Yeah, there's our copy and an electronic copy.
So, what, what, you're right. What we're going to do is we've asked our borough attorney to investigate this and report back, because that, if it wasn't for you coming in, I believe none of this would be happening tonight. Okay, so, this is my personal views, but you have complete unanimity from every one of this council that, that if, that your actions prompted a, a break that showed us, demonstrated a breakdown in something, a, a piece of mail to an elected official by a government agency, that's cause of concern, because I don't know what else happens. Now, I also know, this is a preliminary matter, most of the state workers are still working from home.
That's true.
So, so I don't- So, I don't know what's going on there. You know, when someone sends out a piece of mail from their home, I have no idea, but I can promise you, he's going to, he's going to look into this, and we will report back to you what broke down in that communication, because we can't have that, ever. But let alone about such an important issue to our community, to each one of our own, our own health. It's not just your health, and I understand your problems. It's our health too. We're all in the same boat, we all drink the same water, we all have pets, most of us. If you don't, I apologize. But, so, but thank you. And if you didn't come in, this would not be going on.
We will be investigating it and get back, we will find out about this letter.
Thank you.
Half the board, half the council has my email and my phone number.
Oh, I know you personally, yes. And yourself. Yes, you wanted to speak?
Yes, I did.
We're still open. This is important.
Ann Cedar, 33 Windin Ridge. I know Mawa got an $800,000 grant for their, to go towards their cost of this project. Have we applied for grants? Have we been approved, denied? Where, what is the status on grants for us?
As soon as I read about the $800,000, because I still get the record, every morning I read it, and I read $800,000, I went nuts, I called our administrator. And what was your response to me?
What, with Mawa?
Yes.
That it was through the congressional program, I believe, the earmark program, and that's probably a fraction of what they're going to need to spend on.
I understand, but they-
We did apply. We're applying everywhere. Like I said, we are-
Have we gotten a response to any of the grants that we've applied for?
Well, so far, we have not gotten any grants.
We have no grant funds for this project. All right, so this is something, you're going to see a bond ordinance next week to start that funding process, so we can move ahead. Okay? And we'll be funded through the water utility.
But that's what I'm telling you, that I'm going through every agency, every contact, every department to see about getting some funding. Mawa, yes, Mawa got money, and their water, what it's going to cost them is a lot more than it's going to cost us. So, $800,000 sounds like a lot of money, but it would be like giving us maybe 800.
I don't really care. I don't care how, I want to know if we're getting money.
I understand that, but when I saw it, I agree.
Yeah.
$800,000 to Mawa.
But did we start the grant process before, and we didn't wait until we found out Mawa got it, right?
We didn't, just started now, believe me, I promise you, that's not what happened.
So, there is still a chance that we're going to get grants, or still outstanding?
We're not giving up.
Okay. But have they, do we have applications that have not been decided yet? That's what I'm asking. Or have they all been denied so far?
Not for this, not for this project.
It was the sewer.
It was the sewer we put in.
So then, we don't have any grants that we applied for, for this project?
We applied, but we-
They've been denied?
We're denied. So, we're still looking.
Okay.
I just want to address that real quick. When Congressman Gottheimer was in town, by the bridge going back about a year ago, I did ask the congressman, hey, listen, you know, we're looking for money for the bridge, we're looking for money for the water system, you know what we got?
Yes, that is true. So, as soon as they changed the district, and I agree with you, and as soon as they changed the district, I immediately approached the new congressman.
Pass crap, Earl.
Thank you, he doesn't like the way I say it. So, he is going to come, and I told him he's going to come here, and he's going to go to the bridge, but that's a separate issue.
I was going to say, I, it was my understanding that Gottheimer had money for, because I'm here for about the bridge too.
We didn't, we were denied.
So, no, I heard that he had the money for the bridge and then took it with him to the new district.
No, he didn't have the money for the bridge. No, that's not true.
Great, okay.
I don't know.
I don't know what he told you, but he, he told us that.
If you have, if you have that information, please let us know.
I'll wait till we get to the bridge. I wasn't bringing up the bridge.
I can tell you that Mr. Coons and I discussed how you were going to administer this project, and one of the discussions we had was the I-Bank. And we did not go with the I-Bank, because that would delay bringing the project online. And so, that was a consideration. It's not just the availability of funding, it's also the federal dollars, and the I-Bank as well have requirements that add not just cost, but a lot of time. And that congressional grant could wind up extending the time that project is implemented. And the I-Bank definitely would affect the timelines that I just talked about.
We're not giving up.
Do we have a total for how much this is going to cost?
For which? The water?
The water.
No, back to the water.
I don't, I don't know what the numbers are. I know we do, but I don't know what they are this evening.
We'll get the information out.
I can tell you the ballpark estimate. And I say ballpark, because it's being refined before we introduce the bond ordinance at the next meeting. The ballpark estimate we've been working with is about $3 million. Essentially, about $1 million of the rest total.
Okay, you wanted to speak?
Todd Horn, 82 Manitowab. With all due respect, I've heard you, as the mayor, say numerous times that you're drinking the water, there's no issues with it, you're going to continue to drink with the water. Now, I'm hearing that we're in a stage of crisis, or at least that's my perception of it. Are you now suggesting that we should stop and cease drinking the water?
No, I'm still drinking the water.
Okay, just wondering.
I'm still drinking the water.
It seems like two weeks ago, and I do appreciate these people coming and, you know, putting a fire under it.
I was under the impression that Dean had brought up, so I'm now going to investigate that part of it.
Okay. It just seemed like two weeks ago, drank the water, no issues, the standards changed.
I'm drinking the water.
And that's fine. And I'm saying, with all due respect, now I'm hearing, wow, we're in a crisis, don't let your dogs drink it, your cats drink it.
Like I said, I am going to follow up on what Dean just gave you, that information. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're with his neighbor, you're with the other wells growing up.
And what well am I on? Does anybody know? Well, Manitowab.
Can I, can I address this a little bit about the wells, which well I'm on? And Kevin will get into this more, all right? And I'm sorry if there was some misunderstanding, but here's the information that was communicated. The water gets blended in the tanks, not, not as, before it gets to the tank. It gets blended in the tanks, because multiple wells will, this will pump up to a given tank, that water gets blended, and then goes to the distribution system to your individual home. Okay? That was the point I was making when we spoke. Okay? Sorry if you didn't understand it that way.
You didn't communicate it that way. Don't-
And, and we've talked about following up, taking samples at the tanks themselves, and see what those readings are, and we're pursuing that as well.
Yes.
Mike Elston, 78 Manitowab. Been in town for five years. Just a quick question. When was the very first date that the town was notified that we had the water issue? How long ago?
Very first date?
Would you say 2020?
Do you remember the very first date?
No, the, we exceeded the-
2021.
The MCL on one of the wells after the third quarter results in 2021.
In 2021. And then, when was Mr., when was Mr. Boswell brought in to take, to take charge of it?
Pretty quickly right after that, because there's a number of steps that we had to take, as Mr. Boswell had explained, in terms of reporting. We then undertook analysis to determine what-
Six months?
What, no, not much.
Four months, two months?
So, then we went through the analysis of what the treatment, preferred treatment option was, you know, pretty much by the end of 2021, beginning of 2022, went right into system design, okay? And once that system was designed, filed the permit for the constructibility, right, that first round of permits. DEP then had that for about four months before, and that brought you to September of 2022.
All right, no, that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Name 187 West Oakland Ave. I'm really behind on this. What's poisoning our wells? What's in it? English, so I can understand.
Oh, in English you want?
I want meaning.
The compounds we're talking about, PFAs, they're referred to as forever chemicals. Their sources are from many different man-made products that have been used over the past decades. Scotchgard, Teflon, firefighting foam, stain resistance in carpeting, and they just don't break down, and they're not removed by normal treatment methods. The only thing that takes them out are, there's three different methods to take them out, and if you don't use those three different methods, they just stay in, they go through, or they'll go through a sanitary sewer treatment plant, come out the other end, they're still there. So-
How do we stop it from getting in?
Well, a lot of the products that originally were responsible for putting them in have been discontinued over the past decades.
How about the herbicide and pesticides that we use on our lawns?
I know.
That's not causing any trouble?
They're not in that. If you Google PFAs, you'll, you'll see where, how they, how they came to be and how they got introduced into the, into the, into everything. Into, I mean, they, they used to always only be thought that they were in groundwater systems, they're in reservoir systems. They're in just about any, any groundwater, not the aquifer. If you test almost everywhere, you'll find them.
I threw away all my Teflon plans, pans that I bought 20 years ago, just bought them new ones.
20 years ago, they were in the Teflon. Scotchgard.
Thank you.
Mr. Boswell, were they testing for PFOAs 20 years ago?
Yeah, what happens, that's a good question. The way, the way the EPA operates is they, they make you test, we, the state of New Jersey and the, and the EPA regulates around 100 different contaminants. And, and they, but they, on five-year intervals, they will make, make you test several hundred more. And they call it the unregulated contaminant monitoring, UCMF forms, unregulated contaminant monitoring form. And your water operators will test all of them, and then send all the data in, and then the scientists, as well as other people involved with risk assessment, health impacts, all on five-year intervals, update the standards. And that's exactly what happened here. There, they had a standard of 70 parts per trillion. They, the state decided to adopt a far more rigid standard. The state can only adopt a stricter standard, like arsenic, and federal standards, 10. State standards, four rigid standards for PFAs going forward. And frankly, what we're looking at is how we, how we can treat to higher standards going forward. And we know what it's going to involve, it's going to involve more filter units. It's the same technology, it's more filter units. It's also going to involve more-
So, we're going to have to get a new system, or you can go, be able to adapt it?
You're going to either have to add more filters or replace the media more often.
How long has the technology, how long has the technology been around to detect PFOA?
The PFOAs that were just brought in, 13 parts per tril, 13 to 14 parts per trillion, at the time they were brought on, there were four, four laboratories in the, in the country that could test to that level. Two of them were in North Carolina, and they got hit with a hurricane, and we lost half of the last, the certified labs that could test for this particular contaminant. Now, many, many labs can test for this contaminant, but they are talking about taking it to a much higher standard, and again, basically the current detection limit.
When you said five years, so it was five years ago, they had the, the technology available to test the water for PFOA, or before that?
They had four labs in this, in the country that were testing at, at the levels we're talking about. They were testing for PFOAs.
20 years ago? 10 years ago? Five years ago? Five years ago?
Five years ago. So, these are very new standards being implemented.
So, I guess, follow-up question on that. Do we have water samples that are stored somewhere for looks like going back 10, 15, 20 years? If they want to go back and take a sample of that, going back 20 years to see what the PFOA level was?
They have the results, but there could have been PFOAs that were listed as non-detect because they were below the testing limit.
Right.
And they don't keep the samples themselves. They only, if the technology can only test the five parts per trillion, and they lower it to three parts per trillion, it shows up as a non-detect.
So, there's really no way of determining going back 20 years, if there was an incident in town?
No, because you're, you're, it's physical evidence that you're, you have to refrigerate, there's a chain of custody, it has to be tested a certain way. There's a very specific, you know, when you, when you do sampling of water, it's in a sterile bottle. If, you know, if you're drinking bottled water, Poland Spring Water, anywhere to test that, I think you'd be very surprised what you see in it versus what's in-
And if you sample chlorinated water, you have to have something in there to do, to do away with the chlorine, chlorine. I forget what they're called.
It's a, it, and that's right. Bottled water is regulated by the Food and Drug Administration. If bottled water is sold in the state of New Jersey, it has to meet the drinking water standards also. If you buy that bottled water in a different state, it doesn't necessarily meet the state of New York, New Jersey drinking water standard.
So, if we buy bottled water here in New Jersey tomorrow, in New Jersey, it will not have any PFOA or PFOS in it, higher than-
It is required to meet the current drinking water standards in New Jersey if it's sold in New Jersey.
So, it has to be free from PFOS?
Yes, if it's in another state-
Below the standard.
Another, another state had, as I said, New Jersey is the fourth highest drinking water standard in the country. So, if you buy it in another state with a more relaxed drinking water standard, or from another-
That, that's what gets me. I know you said the federal limit is 70 parts per trillion, and New Jersey's is 13 parts per trillion. What does New Jersey recognize that the federal government is not recognizing? Because if it's that, if it's that dangerous at, at 13, I don't know why the federal government would have it at 70.
There's, there are, and the federal government-
So, what's more dangerous? 70? I mean, if 70 isn't dangerous?
The federal government is currently considering whether they're going to adopt more rigid standards. At the same time they're saying that, they also have to look at whether it can practically be achieved. So, that's how they develop the standards.
So, New Jersey is not looking to see if we can practically achieve a lower standard?
It may, before they can adopt the standard, they need to make sure it's possible to achieve it in, in a practical manner. That's what, that's what the UCMR, UCA, UCMRF sheets do. They, they test everything, then they weigh the health effects, then they-
I'm not saying New Jersey's being overly too cautious. What I'm saying is, the federal government should be as aware as New Jersey is how dangerous it is. So, the 70, to me, sounds ridiculously high. If, if in New Jersey, we have it down to 13.
There was an article in last week's news talking about some towns in Wisconsin, and the levels were 2100.
So, if bottled water is bottled in another state and distributed into New Jersey, who tests it?
You can't sell it in New Jersey unless it meets current drinking water standards in New Jersey.
Exactly, but who is doing that? Who's doing the inspections?
The Food and Drug Administration has-
And the original plant?
If you import water to ShopRite, it's sold in ShopRite. It's regulated by the FDA, but the FDA requires that it must meet the drinking water standard in this, in New Jersey.
Who's inspecting it?
I can't believe that.
They're supposed to be inspecting it. We don't know if they're inspecting it.
I'm just telling you what the regular requirements are. Thank you, Mr. Boswell.
I have one more question about the, you said it was about 3 million, does that include the fines?
I didn't say it was about 30.
Somebody said 3 million, does that include the fines?
Our administrator.
Yeah, I'm sorry, there's no fines.
We're not getting fined?
No.
No? Okay.
Please don't say that word. No, we're not getting fined so far. I'm trying to get a waiver of the permit fees. I'm working on that, which, anyone else would like to speak on the water with, while Mr. Boswell is still here? Thank you.
Motion to close the open session?
It was the open session. We never got to it. So, is there a motion to open to the open session?
Motion to open the open session.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Does anyone wish to speak on anything other, well, we don't have Mr. Boswell here, on any other issue? Oh, I guess you want to speak?
You want to go?
Sure, just go ahead. Are you okay?
No, I'm not. I've had several heart attacks and back surgery, but that's besides the point.
Name and address.
650 Ramapo Valley Road, Oakland, New Jersey.
David, do you have to give your last name?
David D. Victoria. And I have complained to the Oakland Police Department on numerous occasions about the speed limit that is not enforced. The town of Oakland could make a small fortune on simply enforcing the speed limit on Route 202, and I find it extremely annoying. They come around the curve, and they, they floor the gas pedal, and it is both noisy and is pollution-wise too.
What's your address, Ken?
650 Ramapo Valley Road.
And you came into my office, I told you I would call the police. And you came into my office, I told you I would call the police, which I did. I notified them. We have a new traffic officer. I said, you have to check it out.
Okay.
Further north in your house.
Yeah, I'm at 499. I understand what you're saying. I have a straightaway in front of my house.
Oh. You know exactly what I'm talking about. And my neighbor came down with me today and he has the exact same complaint. And that is, they come around that curve, I think he's at 648?
644.
I didn't realize this. I'm going to have to look on the way home, there's a curb by your house.
And, and it's, it's just incredible. I mean, they come around that curve and they floor the gas pedal and they fly up that road. And it is noisy, pollution, and the town could make a small fortune on simply enforcing the existing speed limit.
Well, it's also more important for safety of everybody. So, Mr. Boswell, I had called the police, I had called the police chief and I notified him after David came into my office. So can you get in touch with our traffic officer?
I'll follow up with the chief tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you.
Please, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then be careful.
Why are you holding things? Are you hurt?
Well, one of our draft horses stomped my foot years ago. Name Schwartz Fisher 187 West Oakland Ave. Well, right now, if the water doesn't kill you, the taxes are gonna. My taxes went up over $2,000. They're telling me that my house, which I had on the market.
The assessment?
Yeah.
The assessment letter you're talking about?
Yeah.
Your taxes went up 2,000 or your assessment went up 2,000?
Well, they said the taxes. My mortgage went from $1,000 a month to now 1,500 because of that letter.
Wow.
They're saying my house is now.
Could you tomorrow, could you go to Borough Hall and show that to Mr. Boswell?
Yes, yeah. I mean, I've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight houses here that are not even close to this price. They're all bigger than mine.
You're saying about the assessment?
Yeah.
So yes, go to, go to Borough Hall tomorrow and, and look for Mr. Boswell. He will explain everything to you.
Now, she's saying her taxes went up 2,000.
The assessment now.
The assessment went up 2,000.
Well, the mortgage went up 500.
No, but I'm just saying, you didn't get a tax increase of 2,000.
I think I did.
The assessment on the value of the house went up 2,000. So your house is more valuable.
Let, let him go tomorrow to Borough Hall. He'll explain, he will explain the letter to you.
Okay.
Because yes.
Okay, thank you.
And if you still have questions, call me afterwards.
Okay, thanks. Thanks so much about that. I'm not giving my.
Anyone else wish to speak on any issue in town? Now, now you can, now the motion.
Motion to close the open session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of minutes. We have minutes from January 25th. Is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? If no discussion, roll call.
Council members Kamala, McCann, Pigmentelli, Sally Yanni, Pozzinski?
Yes.
I know it's January 25th, why do I have? Oh, it's a typo.
Executive Session 25th.
It's, it's typo. It's January 25th, executive session. If there's going to be any discussion, it must be done during executive session. Is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
Second.
Will there be any discussion? If not, roll call.
Council members Kamala, McCann, Pigmentelli, Sally Yanni, Pozzinski, Calomini.
Yes.
So we already did the first one, the appointment of our attorney. Welcome to Water of Oakland.
I will also.
All right, the next one is the Flood Commission. I'm very excited to hear that we're going to fill the vacancy. And Charles Palmer has put in to be commissioner. And the term, is it a three-year term? So is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Roll call.
Council members Kamala, McCann, Pigmentelli, Sally Yanni, Pozzinski, Calomini.
Yes.
Excellent. Good person, thank you. The next one is the Public Events Committee. And we have someone, Joe and Glimmer put in.
And he's couns, he's present.
Yes. He finally put in his, his form. So is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Roll call.
Council members Kamala, McCann, Pigmentelli, Sally Yanni, Pozzinski, Calomini.
Do you know anything about Mike Ozak? Is he still interested, councilman?
Yes and no.
Oh, that's a good answer. Okay, he will follow up.
Yeah, he, yes.
All right, and then we also have other vacancies. So if anybody's interested in coming on to the Public Events Committee, I'm sure Councilman Calomini would be happy to contact you. The next one is.
Environmental Commission.
Is the environmental, and, and we just got one in. And where did I put that? What's he doing, his first name?
Allison.
Allison Cam. Is there a motion? Sorry.
Some move.
Second.
Roll call.
Council members Kamala, McCann.
Upstate.
Pigmentelli.
Yes.
Sally Yanni.
Yes.
Pozzinski.
Yes.
Calomini.
Yes.
Thank you. And now, mayor's appointment is Access for All. I have, there was a vacancy and I'm appointing Kathleen McCarthy. So thank you, Kathleen McCarthy, for Access for All. And I did get an email about, did you forward that to Access for All? The email about a meeting, was it a lunch and breakfast meeting? It was a breakfast meeting. Did you get the email? Okay, thank you. And we have emergency management and everybody put in. Everybody put in?
Yes.
All right, Roy Bauberger, he's been the coordinator for so many years. Tim Ryan, Leonard Tanis, Anthony Macasselli, Chief Keith Sensary, Sergeant Keith Nakra, Chief Vincent Dice, Assistant Chief Donald Johnston, Assistant Chief Vincent. I could.
Incorvate.
I reached out with. Incorvate, yes. Chief Jeff Von Caso, Matt Goodbridge, Mayor Schwager, Councilman Kamala, Richard Kuns, Frank Cora, Carol Corelli, Don Brock, and Darius Polk. So thank you, everybody. Another one is mayor's appointment is Municipal Alliance, but nobody put in.
The all school officials?
Oh, it's all school officials? Okay. I will appoint, it's all school officials, I'm told. And Keith, Keith Sensary, Lauren Binder, Lieutenant Mark Piercey, Jacqueline Cristiano, Marianne Perry, Lara Popek, Colleen Cancelieri, Ariel Prestiato, Henry Wasesteen, Jennifer Inglitt, and Jodi Caprero. And we will make sure there are meetings this time. Shade Tree. We have Ron Heatherbridge. And we had an opening and that is a five-year, unexpired. And did we get anything from Nancy Kraus?
She's a member.
She, it says, okay, she put in. Oh, because you highlighted it.
Nancy's currently a member, ma'am.
And that's it. Authorized Rappel License for, this is the Mothers Club of Oakland. It's Rappel License 1447. And it is a Rappel on April 21st, 2023. And the value, it's a 50/50, $400. Donations to cancer research, non-monetary donations for Oakland residents and battling cancer. And is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The second one is Rappel License for 46, Mothers Club of Oakland. It's on April 21st, 2023, 155 Ramapo Valley Road. It's a Rappel. And it's going to be gift baskets, donations to cancer research, non-monetary donations for Oakland residents battling cancer. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Marks the 100th anniversary of the Bergen County Section National Council of Jewish Women, a grassroots organizations of volunteers and advocates who turn progressive ideals into action. And since the beginning, when a small group of courageous women got together with the goal of making life better for people in their community, the National Council of Jewish Women of Bergen County Section has emphasized public service, civic engagement, and has fostered a sense of sisterhood among women. And where is it inspired by the Jewish values? National Council of Jewish Women Bergen County has become a force in helping to improve the lives of women, children, families of Bergen County, New Jersey, and beyond. And during a time when individual freedoms have come under threat, the National Council of Jewish Women Bergen County Section Advocates for Reproductive Freedom, Racial Equality Violence Workers Without Medical Insurance, People with MS, and so much more. And it's comprised of over 1,000 women across Bergen County. Now therefore be resolved that Island H. Schwager by virtue of authority vested me as the mayor of Oakland and the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, to hereby applaud the National Council of Jewish Women in Bergen County Section for a century of philanthropy, fundraising advocacy, and sister in Bergen County beyond, and declare April 20, 2023, the date of the section's official centennial celebration to be the National Council of Jewish Women Day. And just so everybody's aware, it's not just a Jewish organization and it's not just women. There are men and all religious affiliations. And now we have resolutions. We'll do this as a consent agenda. If you wish any pulled out, let me know. Okay. 20, this is Resolution 2362. It's the 2023 Temporary Budget Emergency. The governing body may by resolution adopt by a two-thirds vote of the full membership, make emergency temporary appropriations, and may lawfully be made for a period between the beginning of the current fiscal year and the adoption of the budget. And that is that resolution. 2363 is a water bid to MSP Construction Corporation for Acorn Florence and Birch Avenues Water Main Improvements Project. The borough received a bid, MSP Construction Corporation from Flemington, was the lowest with a responsive bid of $293,290. CFO has certified that funds are available. 2364, award contract to C Elston and Associates who are professional borough labor attorney services for 2023. Kathy Elston, the firm of C Elston and Associates, to serve as the borough labor attorney for the year 2023. And not to, the contract shall not exceed the amount of $27,500 without further authorization of the governing body. And our CFO has certified that funds are available. 2365, award contract to Boswell Engineering for professional borough engineering services for 2023. And not to exceed the contract of $30,600. That is $15,600 retainer and $15,000 allowance for minor engineering project built on a time and material basis without further authorization of the governing body. And the CFO has certified that funds are available. 2366, award contract to Boswell Engineering for professional borough water and sewer engineer for 2023. And the contract amount shall not exceed $25,000 without further authorization of the governing body. And our CFO has certified that the funds are available. 2367, award contract to Lurch Vincy Bliss LLP for professional borough audit services for 2023. The contract shall not exceed, excluding work charge to the borough's various capital accounts set forth in that contract, not to exceed $42,000 without further authorization of the governing body. And the CFO has certified that funds are available. 2268, award contract to Rogat McCarthy LLC for professional borough bond counsel services for 2023. Our CFO will certify to the availability of funds, the funds to be incurred from various capital accounts pursuant to Section 20 of the local bond law prior to any payment. 2369, award contract to T&amp;M Associates for professional borough planner services for 2023. The borough's review team has determined that Carolyn Ryder of the firm of T&amp;M Associates will be most advantageous to the borough, all relevant factors considered, and the contract amount shall not exceed $9,500 without further authorization of the governing body and CFO. And the CFO has certified that funds are available. 2370, award contract to Otis Debt Insurance Agency for professional borough risk manager services for liability property for 2023. And it is Kim Costamano of the firm, Otis Debt Insurance Agency, to serve as the borough risk manager for liability property for the year 2023. And there shall be 6% of the borough's joint insurance fund annual assessment as per the fund's bylaws. And, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Pleasure.
It was a sneeze, thank you. And payment shall be, and payment shall be made to Otis Debt Insurance Agency directly by the Bergen County J. 2371, award contract to the Baza Agency for professional borough risk manager services for health benefits for 2023. The amount is $48.81 per employee slash retiree per month for medical and prescription coverage and $5.17 per employee retiree per month for dental coverage with payment being made to the Baza Agency directly by the Bergen Municipal Employee Benefits Fund. Commission on the life premium of 7.5% with payment being made to the Baza Agency by the carrier. Commission on the short-term disability premium, 10%, to be paid directly by the carrier. And commission on the long-term disability premium of 15% to be made by the carrier. 2372, award contract to William Benwick for professional borough prosecutor services for 2023. And he's with the law firm of Pierce Law. And the amount of the contract shall not exceed $23,100 without further authorization of the governing body. And the CFO has certified that the funds are available. 2373, is a award contract to Christopher J. Kane Esquire for professional borough alternate prosecutor services for 2023. And the contract amount shall not exceed $2,100 without further authorization of the governing body. And the CFO has certified that the funds are available. 2374, award contract to Diane DeLisandro Esquire for professional borough public defender services. Careful, it'll spill. For 2023. And that the contract amount shall not exceed $7,200 without further authorization of the governing body. And our CFO has certified that funds are available. 2375, award contract to $3,000 without further authorization of the governing body. And our CFO has certified that the funds are available. 2376, authorized shared services agreement with Northwest Bergen Utilities Authority for septage, sludge, and gray water disposal. And NBCUA has submitted a proposal to accept said disposal. And this is a shared service agreement between the borough. And the borough will pay the following rates. For gray water less than or equal to 2.6% solids, .0375 per gallon. For septage exceeding 2.6 solids, percent solids but not greater than 4% solids, 058.058 per gallon. For sludge exceeding 4% solids but not greater than 7.9% solids, .078 per gallon. And for sludge exceeding 7.9 solids but not greater than 12% solids, .102 per gallon. 2377, authorized refund of taxes for Munich and Dawn Kumar due to overpayment. And it's a refund of taxes that are due on an amount of $3,047.40. It is for the Kumars at 41 Walton Avenue, Block 3801, Lot 64. 2378, award contract to Boswell Engineering for engineering services for Truman Field. 2378, a wood contract to Boswell Engineering for engineering services for Truman Field refurbishment projects. And there are six tasks involved. It's a proposal from January 20, 2023, cannot exceed the cost of $68,000 without further coming, coming to the governing body. CFO has certified that funds are available. Task one, field surveying, $3,500. Two, design and preparation of contract documents, $11,500. Three, environmental permitting applications, $20,000. Four, structural engineering by Boswell Engineering, $4,000. Geotechnical subconsultant, $9,000. Bid administration, $1,500. And construction management and inspection, $18,500. 2379, a wood contract to Boswell Engineering for construction inspection services for Monhegan Avenue Emergency Water Main Replacement Project, dated January 20, 2023. The total fee is not to exceed $10,700. Our CFO has certified funds are available and it's for a professional service for which no public bidding is required. 2380, a wood contract to Boswell Engineering for engineering services for Seminole Avenue Improvement Phase III project, not to exceed $31,600, broken down as follows. And the proposal is dated January 20, 2023. One, field topographic surveying design. Two, engineering, design engineering services. Our CFO has certified that funds are available. 2381, authorized refund of taxes for Juan Andres Gomez due to overpayment. It is $2,730.34 residing at Six Hope Art Place, block 53003, lot 2. 2382, refunds, authorized refund of taxes for Joseph Daniela Piscane due to overpayment, $229.48 residing at properties at 36 Eagle Crest Place, block 5304, lot 36. 2280, 2383, resolution authorizing the sale of senior center chairs American Legion Post number 369. And there was not a need for, it's the disposition of personal property, not needed for public use without public sale. Fair market value of the property is less than $6,600, which is 15% of the bid threshold. These chairs have a value of less than $6,600. And that we've been notified by the American Legion Post 369, right here in Oakland, that they desire to purchase these chairs for use at the American Legion Hall. And therefore the surplus senior center banquet chairs to be sold to the American Legion number 369 for $151 at a price of $1 per chair and shall be disposed of accordingly to the manner described by law. 2384, almost finished. Authorized refund of other fees and permits for solar system permit issued to Tesla Energy Operations, Inc. for property located at 20 Bailey Avenue. And our CFO has certified that funds, the amount is due and that funds are available. And it's for Tesla Energy Operations, Inc. And it's located at 1 Chapin, Chapin Road, unit 4 in Heimberg and it's block 1901, lot 36. Resolution 2385, authorized refund of other fees and permits for solar system permit issued to Tesla Energy Operations, Inc. for property located at 19 Winding Ridge Road. And it is block 1201, lot 30. And it's in the amount of $148.80. A wood bid, this is 2386, a wood bid to Louis Graham, Inc. for Penn Allen House Phase II interior, was there another one? Was it changed?
Uh, yes. Not a significant change.
January 24, 2023, the borough received two bids for the Penn Allen House, the Phase II interior renovations. Louis Graham, Inc., 15 Brettwood Road and Clark was the lowest bidder with a total bid price of $96,500. And our CFO has certified that funds are available. And so this is... 2387, a wood contract to CGPNH for Affordable Housing Administrative Agent Services for 2023. They're located at 1249 South River Road, suite 301 in Cranberry, New Jersey. They submitted a proposal as the Affordable Housing Administrative Agent and Rehabilitation Program Manager for the Borough of Oakland. And our CFO has certified funds are available, the program manager at a cost not to exceed $8,580. 2388, a wood contract to Hoplight Communications 5G Consulting Services for 2023. The Borough of Oakland to retain a consultant to provide municipal services with regard to the borough's communication carriers. As carrier agreements and facilities are beyond the scope and expertise of professionals normally utilized by the borough, Peter J. Lupo of Hoplight Communications will serve as the consultant at no cost to the borough for the term of January 1, 2023 through January 31, 2023. And there's an additional one, 2389. It's a resolution indemnifying the mayor, borough council members, borough staff and borough professionals from personal liability in connection with Kusala Care LLC's cannabis cultivation application. The application was listed for consideration by the mayor council on October 12, 2022. The application was tabled, the mayor council took no action. And the, a notice claimed dated December 21, 2022 has been filed by Kusala Care LLC. And it's the best interest of the mayor council, borough staff and borough professionals to be specifically indemnified and held harmless by the borough with respect to Kusala Care LLC's application and resolution of support. Okay. Are there any you wish to pull out?
Yes, mayor.
Which one? Which one?
I have to pull out 2383 because I'm a member there and I need to vote separately.
Oh, the American Legion?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else?
2380.
All right. All right. 83 is the American Legion and 80 is the Seminole Avenue Improvement Phase II, three, sorry. So let's start 83, which is resolution authorizing the sale, well, we'll do all the others. Are there any others? So as a consent agenda, other than resolution 2380 and 2383, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Rogal.
Councilmembers Kamala, McCann.
Yes.
Pignotelli.
Yes.
Saliani.
Yes.
Lozinski.
Yes.
Palomini.
Yes.
Okay. Resolution 2383, resolution authorizing the sale of senior center chairs to the American Legion Post number 369.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Rogal.
Councilmembers Kamala.
Yes.
McCann.
Yes.
Pignotelli.
Abstain.
Saliani.
Yes.
Lozinski.
Yes.
Palomini.
Yes.
Now, resolution 2380, a wood contract to Boswell Engineering for engineering services for Seminole Avenue Improvement Phase III project. Yes.
That's just in front of my house, so I just want to think.
Well, I would like to say something. I didn't know when to say it, but our engineer who works for Boswell Engineering, you are in charge of all the road projects in town, right? The contractors involved. And daily I can complain, they're doing their work. They have to do their work. Unfortunately, timing is that a lot of the roads are closed at the same time. But they have to clean up at the end of the day. And that's what's happening. They're not cleaning up. So it's a good time to bring it up. Thank you, councilman, for bringing this up now. Daily, I guess, you know, at the end of the day, I was telling Mr. Coons, I said, it's like when you hire somebody to come to your house and he's a great plumber or a great contractor, but then he leaves a mess in the house afterwards. You really don't want him to come back. So the question is, can you please talk to all these, I don't know who oversees their work. At the end of the day, someone has to check them. And you know, we have a notice already of someone who dad got major damage to his vehicle on Lakeside.
Yes, mayor. So I will, do you want me to report back to Mr. Coons on this?
Please.
On, we've, this has been in front of us for a couple of weeks now. And we've been, we've instructed our inspectors to pay particular attention to the decommissioning project for that contracted to clean up up to themselves and to pay particular attention to the trenches and to the potholes that are being created. We also have public service that's doing a lot of work in town. And I've been talking with them directly. They did send a sweeper and addressed that within 24, 48 hours of me reaching out to them. We will obviously do this again. I drove all of the trenches before the last mayor and council meeting I was at. I guess that was about, what, two weeks ago? So we will, I will do some further follow-up and if those efforts are falling short, we'll, we'll adjust that and do something better than that. So that's all I could give you right now.
I thank you. It was, it was just, I felt it was the right time to bring it up and I'm bringing it up.
I have a additional question. Do our inspectors stay till the end of the day?
They are required to. And I've told people, you know, I can't be out there 24/7.
No, you can't, but...
Watching them. But I tell everybody, if you don't see that, please let me know and then I will take it to the proper channels at Boswell to make sure that, that...
Thank you.
That's corrected.
Thank you.
So if you know a particular incident or something, please let me know.
Thank you.
Well, Lakeside is the biggest problem.
Yes. Yes, mayor.
But anyway, I think what you're saying is we need to have a day, a date, like on January the 12th.
Every day.
Well, I'm just saying, we need to, from now.
Well, yes, we already got a bill, so.
From now on, yeah.
The gentleman whose car was damaged.
Correct.
Okay. So now we're back to, it just, I didn't know when the right time was, but I thought that's why you stopped Seminole. So resolution 2380, a wood contract to Boswell Engineering for engineering services for Seminole Avenue Improvement Phase III project. Your motion?
So moved.
Second.
Rogal.
Councilmembers Kamala.
Yes.
McCann.
Yes.
Pignotelli.
Yes.
Saliani.
Yes.
Lozinski.
Yes.
Palomini.
Abstain.
Work session. We have no ordinances, so it's not applicable. Work session proposed for engineering services for River Road Water Main Improvement Project.
Yeah, I guess I can just address this real briefly. Earlier tonight, you just, oh, just a few minutes ago, you awarded a contract for a water rehab project in the Pleasanton neighborhood. So that's out to bid, that's going to be under construction. We have a pre-con meeting that we're scheduling hopefully before the end of next week. This proposal here is for the follow-on project to that as we continue to rather aggressively pursue replacement of water mains where we need to. So this section is on River Road, about 700 feet of six-inch water main. And this would be for a design contract essentially with Boswell, so we can proceed with that. And this project also is backed by about $101,000 community development block grant. So that's the one that was moved that project forward.
Now, everybody look at this letter. Do you notice what's stamped on top? Received.
Yes.
That's what we were talking about.
Yeah. So if we can proceed at the next meeting, we can get that project going and hopefully undertake that later this year.
Now, councilman, McCann, you wanted to bring up repeal the cannabis ordinance.
Sure. I'll open it up to the floor to anyone who wants to offer comment.
Yes. We had, oh, do you want to speak first?
I'll speak second.
Oh, you could speak first.
I know this has been a subject we've been talking about here in town for quite some time. I happen to be on the committee that the mayor formed, I guess it's about a year and a half ago, two years ago. And, and we did look at, we did look at both sides. And I, you know, what they say, compromise is the art, diplomacy must contain compromise. And I think we did do that. Our ordinance specifically mentions things that I think are extremely important. Cultivation can only be done in the industrial park. They must employ, 10% of the workforce must come from borough Oakland. They must have their own security measures in place, which is going to be reviewed by our police department. One of the biggest things that, that we said was any money derived from any cannabis business, that money must specifically be used to pay down the town's debt. And why is that important? It's important because if we pay down our debt, the less indebtedness we have, the better our bond rating is and the better, the lower the cost of our bonds that we go out for other projects. So I, I thought it was a reasonable compromise. Many times people said, well, the state of New Jersey, 70% of the people voted to legalize it. And that's true. I think here in, in Oakland, 60 or 62% said to legalize it. However, I, I think the question has to specifically be put to the people. Do you want a cannabis retail store here in town? Which we have forbid that, but I think most people would say, no, we don't want a retail store here in town. I'm not sure, I'm not 100% sure on that. That's only my opinion. So I read an article and I distributed it to the, to the borough council tonight. In TNEC, they had a public forum, which, which we did not have when we had our, our committee. And as you know, someone did, did apply to the Borough of Oakland for cannabis cultivation permit and we did not authorize that. And I think it's important to have a public forum. I mean, we're just seven residents of the town. We're not 12,000 whatever residents up here. So I, I think it's been, it's been proposed. I've been, I heard suggestions that some people on the council would like to see the ordinance repealed. I have additional information in this article that I distributed to everybody about the effects of cannabis. However, that's one opinion, and this is my opinion. So if we do move ahead with repealing the cannabis ordinance, I would prefer that we have something similar. Public forum, maybe at the high school or middle school where we can accommodate 60, 50, 100. I mean, this town had, TNEC had 80 people attend. And they really discussed what the effects of a retail store would be in town. So we are different and we do have specifics in our ordinance different than many towns. The one thing I, you know, I want to say though, the, the law says if they produce marijuana in, in TNEC and someone from Oakland wants to order it by mail, we can't stop that. Unless that's changed, this is what I've been told in the beginning. So by authorizing it in the state of New Jersey, you cannot stop a town that does sell retail from delivering it to someone in Oakland. But that's something for discussion. So that's my two cents on, on that particular...
It's more than two cents. You're a very good member. I just wanted to tell you what happened. Back in June of 2021, after it was legalized and, and the council voted not to allow any marijuana, I, I appointed a ad hoc committee. And on the ad hoc committee was our planner, our administrator, a member of the board of health, a resident, a commissioner from the rec, a member of the first aid squad, a member of the zoning and planning board, a former councilman who was totally against marijuana in, in town. I had a councilman, Councilman Pignotelli, who was on the committee because he was against it. And I had a councilwoman, a councilman, I'm sorry, I'm yelling over here, a councilman who was in favor of it, who's, who moved out of town and myself. And we met regularly. And in our meeting, we researched, we investigated, we made maps. We had maps made of our, remember the zoning maps?
Field trips.
Yes, we took field trips. We really did an investigation as to whether or not cannabis... We really did an investigation as to whether or not cannabis was important. I was Oprah'd because I was in favor of it. And the Oprah's, they wanted to know if I had any financial interest. No financial interest in any cannabis company. I do not smoke marijuana. I have never, I, I, I would never even think about smoking it, though I heard that some people use it for medical. In fact, a former councilman's wife, who was very sick, had said that she uses medical marijuana, but I didn't even know anything about that. But my feeling was, we have the property, we are a unique town because we have a commercial area, especially by West Oakland Avenue and on the other side of 200, 287 of Bondui, which it's, it's unusable for any residents and would not affect any residents. And when I heard 2% of the gross, not only 2% of the gross, but they would need a lot of water. And with the, and we had talked about sewers downtown and that the possibility we may have to buy water because the state is requiring that, that we're not going to use, but we would have to pay for it, that we'd come, they would have to pay for it. It was just, to me personally thinking about it, on the behalf of all the residents of Oakland financially, it was a win-win. But I was one person and I don't vote. So we had this ad hoc committee and did all this research. By, we had the planning board, the planning board sends a letter saying that they voted unanimously to support marijuana. No one at any time suggested retail. Nobody wants to retail. That was a given. And we all agreed on that, those who were pro and those who were against. And so I think what, what councilman is suggesting is a very good suggestion. I would like to have, since we have somebody who, I'd like to have two council people on the committee, somebody who may be against it and somebody who may be for it. Reenact this committee, talk about why we did propose the ordinance, and then plan for a public meeting. That is my suggestion. And hear from the public, because you're correct, approximately two-thirds of the public and, and the voters of Oakland voted for the legalization of marijuana.
When did we vote?
When, what was it, 2020? 2020? Was it 2020?
Yes.
2020. That was one of the questions statewide, and it was on the ballot. And, and what made me be in favor of it, since we have the property, was I went to a meeting, a mayor's meeting, and someone spoke about a town in South Jer, well, I call it south because it's below Newark, it's probably Middle Jersey. And they were going to build a, a wastewater treatment plant in their town. And everybody said, no, we don't want it. And they said, oh, we're going to get so much money for it. And they said, we don't want it, we don't want it, the smells, et cetera. So the company went to the very next town. And when the wind blew, all the odors and the smells went to the town that refused it. But in the meantime, the town that had the dumps, the wastewater plant, made all this money. And so the question is, it's legal. I know some towns around us do not want it at all, some do. There's money to be made. To me, it was just financially, I mean, it would, it meant jobs for, they had to hire, how many was it, 20%?
10%.
10% of Oakland residents. The money was going to be earmarked specifically. It wasn't just going to go into the general budget. And, and it's like when you get a gift and you just throw, you know, you want a specific reason for the money. And it was 2% of the gross. Plus wherever they go, we would get increased property taxes wherever the plant is. So we agreed on manufacturing and cultivation, wholesale, anybody could deliver in and out. I mean, that's a given, that's, that's the legal, we have no control over that, even if we never allow cannabis in, in Oakland. But no retail. And we didn't even talk about, we didn't even talk about medical plants at all. It was just straightforward manufacturing, cultivation. And if you ever visit these sites, you don't even know they exist. The only site you see is on Route 17 and retail, we see them lined up to buy. But that's it.
One, one thing I forgot, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead. You were on the committee, you remember.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I think what we've been hearing recently is, raised certain questions that they're make, the state is making the rules as they go along. And I think that's what's scary for, for councils, that whatever the rule is today could be changed tomorrow, could be changed next week, next month. That's a little bit scary because we really don't know what the state is going to do. I mean, look what they're doing to the darn PFAS, but anyway.
Well, they could only get, if a company wants to sell or whatever they do, they can only get a conditional license. They cannot get a real, I think it's annual.
It is annual.
Without, and it has to be municipal approval. And a lot of the municipalities now have a separate board just to vet an incoming application before it ever gets to the council. So let's say John Smith is coming to Oakland and saying, I'd like to start a cultivation or manufacturing. They would have to first go to this board and be vetted before it ever touches us. And they have the right to say, no, no, this is not, this is unacceptable for Oakland. But I'm suggesting that instead of just going right away to repeal it, I think it's important that we discuss it in depth and at length because it was, I think it was unanimous, the vote on the council for the ordinance at the time. I would like to see, just as you said, a public, a public meeting where we hear public, anybody who's interested. And we could even allow a Zooming, you know, we do this in court, you, you allow hybrid, where if you can't come to the meeting, you can call in on Zoom. And I think that's important than just going ahead and say, all right, let's just repeal the ordinance. It's just money that we could use for our residents. We need the money. We, we have, we're doing the budget, remember you asked the question, we're doing the budget now. And it would, and like I said, it was very, the ordinance is very restrictive. It, it could only be in certain places in the borough. And it's away from the residents, so, and it's not near any schools, it's not near residents. And that's, we worked very hard, it was about, Mr. Coons, about six months past?
Six months.
Six months? We met religiously and we did research. And I have a file that's maybe six inches thick of all the research we did. And we even had a former councilman be the one who took the minutes. We have minutes from all the meetings. And it was during the pandemic, so we couldn't meet in person, we met on Zoom religiously. And then we did, and as Councilman Pignatelli told you, we did visits to different places. So that's my, that's my two cents also. Yes.
Mayor?
Rowan Wright in, yes.
You know, the road to hell is paved with good intentions. And no, this council originally looked at this, the committee met, we thought it was a good idea. And now fast forward six months, two years later, and right now, you know, we heard from our attorney, as Cruz Care was in front of us, that, you know, they're building a plane as they're trying to fly it, okay? A lot of, I had questions about how you deal with odor. Turns out the state doesn't even have procedures in place or an enforcement arm to deal with this. So I mean, and now here we are faced with a tort claim. So I mean, at the end of the day, I, I think maybe we jumped the gun, we really didn't do our due diligence on this. And I think we better, you know, err on the side of caution at this point.
Well, now you're disparaging the committee, we didn't do our due diligence, are you kidding? Six months, we did research.
Mayor, like I said.
Everybody investigated.
Mayor, I, I said the committee did good work, and I said is we learned a lot from what took place. Here we are, we're faced with some pretty tough choices and we're in a pretty tough situation. So I, I think that, I agree with what you're saying, Mayor, but I think we are right now in a position where we have to, I feel that we have to repeal this now. And then maybe have your committee revisit this, and once we figure out what the state is going, and we get some rules of engagement, get the rules of the road, we may perhaps then we can.
So you're now willing to have a public meeting and hear from the public?
Can I ask a question?
Of course you could ask a question.
About the due diligence. Could somebody on the committee explain to me the difference between Sativa and Indigo?
Say that again?
Can you explain to me, with all the due diligence and work, what the difference is between Sativa and Indigo? Do you know the difference?
Well, I know, Indigo is, is a, is a color, I mean, it's a dye.
Mayor, anything?
No.
Okay. Well, it would help if you, with all your due diligence and all the committee work that you did, if you knew where the marijuana plant was. No, let me finish.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
All this due diligence and all this work, if you don't know where the marijuana plant is. So that, that's disturbing to me. Because what I hear is every, is money and this and that, and every single reason that has been stated for the, for the purpose of doing this has been proved, there's been no evidence to support any of this position scientifically or otherwise. The, the, the evidence against marijuana and the public health use, as generally speaking, is spectacularly against it, the use of marijuana. I can just, I just made, I just did some research.
Well, no, I'm not proposing using marijuana.
No, 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 let me finish, let me finish.
I'm not.
Let me, let me finish.
Okay.
Because it goes to the oversight issue. The state has no oversight, we don't have any oversight. We don't know, for example, if, if you want to offer any growers, and I'm not talking about anyone in particular, what type of plant that they wanted to grow? Or wouldn't want to, no, let me finish. I, I, Mayor, I let you talk.
No, no, just a question though, wouldn't a board be, that's why they have boards in different towns?
No, no, no.
To bet that?
No. I just heard, all the due diligence you guys did, and you don't know where the marijuana plant is.
I never said I didn't know where the marijuana plant was, I just don't.
You don't know what Indigo and Sativa plant is. And, and they are marijuana plants. And, and that goes to the, the point that you don't know what you're talking about in terms of public health and the effects of marijuana and the deleterious effects it has on the public health. No, no, let me, you don't, you don't know, because you don't know what, so you tell me then, if you don't know what the difference is, okay? How can you sit there and tell me you know what the public health is? Because the difference between the two have a significantly different impact on public health. Did you know that? No, you didn't. You did all this due diligence, it's not there.
I let you keep putting words in my mouth.
You said you did due diligence, you didn't know where the marijuana plant was. The type of marijuana plant that's grown has a substantial impact on the public health. Okay? They have specific different types of reaction to the human body. But you don't know that. And that is striking to me. So all this work and all this due diligence is about money? It was about whether or not you prefer someone's lifestyle? But let's go through the evidence, because it has, it has a lot to do with where I'm coming from. Because there is no evidence to support that it increases revenue. In fact, the evidence is now mounting in California. Okay? This is the Daily Mail, it's a British newspaper. It's, it's essentially a bipartisan paper. How California's Legal Cannabis Dream Became a Public Health Nightmare. The money that they said was coming in, isn't coming in. It's increased the use of marijuana, okay? At a rate that's overwhelming the hospital systems. Let me give you an example. In California, hospital admissions for cannabis-related complications shot up from 1,400 in 2005 to 16,000 by 2019. That's just one, okay? Another study, okay? And this is not industry-supported study like Campbell Cigarettes says, smoking kids is, smoking cigarettes is good for kids. Another study shows that 25% of recreational marijuana users are more likely to end up in the emergency room in the hospital. Not to mention the deleterious health effects it has on women. Okay? Cannabis, okay, study, NIH. Okay? Right here. April 22nd, 2021. Medical records analysis links cannabis use disorder in pregnancy to infant health problems. Let me go on. Because I did listen to what you guys have to say. And, and a commission that doesn't know the difference between the two health, between the two types of marijuana.
Well, we never said we were scientists.
No, 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 no. This is, this is colloquial, this is a Google search. This is a Google search.
You know, if I asked everybody's ordinance, if they know the difference.
I'm not going to debate if you didn't know.
Stop yelling, everybody stop yelling.
I listened to you. I listened to you. If you don't, it's a Google search. All you had to do was a Google search.
We're talking about public health.
No, no, I'm talking about public health, because that's what this impacts.
How does it impact if it's in Oakland, away from everyone?
Well, you said it yourself.
Or if it's in Pompton Lakes?
You said, you want to contribute to the deleterious, because this is definitive. Let's go look at the adolescent studies on it, from the NIH. Adolescent Brain Cognitive Development Study. Okay, a simple Google search. This didn't take a lot of work, okay? Competent committee for six months with all these experts. Okay? No, 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 it's, I'm not done. Substance abuse, okay, in Mental Health Service Administration, this is from the NIH. Learn the risk of marijuana. Okay? Okay? No marijuana has been proven safe during the use of pregnancy while breastfeeding. Okay? Okay. Maybe you don't want to breastfeed, maybe you still want to use formula when it comes back from the pandemic. Okay? We talked about the greater risk for emergency care in patients, but let's go over what it does to, to, to people who, who use it, particularly women. Okay? Fetal, it, it has a negative impact on fetal health growth. It's, it's caused a rise in stillbirths. It's caused a, a rise in low birth weight babies. Okay? It's causing brain problems, development problems. And why the question of whether or not, you know, the difference between a Sativa plant and an Indica plant is because they each have a different effect. Okay? Do you know why, for example, with all the work that you guys did on this research topic of marijuana, why, for example, you get the munchies, people claim to get the munchies when they smoke? You can't answer that question because you don't know the difference between the two plants. You can't answer that question because you don't know. You don't know the effects that has on the hippocampus, on the brain. It's about public health, it's about contributing to the negative impacts of public health, it's about protecting women, it's about protecting low birth weight children. That's what it's about for me. It's not about money that's been proven not to be effective in California. There is no money. There is no money. It doesn't save a dime, it's costing the police more money. If you, you haven't done the work. So I'm arguing with people who claim to have done the work but didn't do the work on basic question of what kind of plant. I don't know what to say to that. I'm stunned.
We are, we're not.
I'm not interested, I'm not interested, I am not interested in any work that was done by anyone that didn't, could tell, not could tell me what the difference was between the two plants.
Because we did not talk about it, it's legal.
No.
It is legal.
It's not the rest, you, you made a representation and I got it. So we have to decide, we have to decide as a body whether or not the work of that committee was sufficient now.
So do you want, are you willing to have a public meeting where?
No, I'm willing to put this to a vote. Okay? Based upon the poor work of that committee, as represented tonight, I want to vote. And then if you want to have a committee and you want to meet about doing it again, yeah, we could do that. I'm always open to public debate. But you just discredited your own work for the last six months.
We did not talk about the medical effects.
It has no medical effects, do you know that?
We're talking about that.
No, it has, no, it has no positive effects.
I know what marijuana does.
You do? You don't know the difference between the two plants? How can you tell me you know what it does? You don't know what the difference is between two plants. Listen, you can't say you know what it does because you don't, because each plant has a different impact. And you should probably go Google it right now if you're interested.
We said no retail. We said manufacturing and cultivation. If it's in Oakland, Pompton Lakes, they're going to buy it.
Look, it's got nothing to do with it. You're supporting poison. You're supporting something that contributes to cognitive dysfunction, causes more anxiety. That's the science, not the, I hope it may be, an industry studies, industry studies or an article, okay, from the Bergen Record, Michael Kelly, who I know very well, who by the way, Pat, I don't know what you're seeing in here that says this is a good thing, because I read the article tonight.
I just said, they suggested having a forum.
This is, this is disgusting to me. Okay? That former councilman, thank God he moved out, because he was the one pushing this thing. And you guys didn't even do basic science, basic, basic research.
We did not do basic science because it was legal.
Well, that's insane. You told me how much work you did. You told me how much work you did. I'm sorry. I, I, I personally will never contribute to the deleterious effect of the public health. I will not make a penny on it, I will not support a penny on it. And I promise you, anyone on the council is entitled to their opinion, I'm one of six, but I'm making this point. Anyone who supports this is not backing the science.
Can I ask you one question, Councilman?
You can ask me two questions.
No, one is all I want to know. No, one is all I want to know. You've lived in town, what, five, six years?
No, nine.
Nine years, okay. So you lived in town when we had this cannabis committee, right?
Yes, I did.
Why didn't you bring this information to us then?
Because I almost died from COVID, Pat, and I wasn't working for a year. And I did bring this information to Councilman, former Councilman Van Eck. I did tell him about it. I had a discussion with him about it.
But I wish, I wish the entire ad hoc committee had the same information. Because you have compelling evidence there.
I know, so.
I'm not saying you don't.
Right.
I'm just saying is, there are many opinions in town.
This isn't an opinion, Pat.
No, 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 not that. I'm not talking about that.
Yes.
I'm talking about if 60% of the people in town voted for it, and six out of 10.
That's not true. That's, in fact, that's an inaccurate statement. Because you're, that's not true. You could say, I think, I wrote it down, the number that you said.
I brought you the statistic.
No, 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 that's not correct. You quoted an inaccurate statistic. You're kind of right, but you're wrong. And I'll explain why. You said 70% of the voters, 70%
Of the state.
Of the state voted for it, and 62% voted for it here in Oakland, okay? That's 62% and 70% of those who voted. That's a significantly different statistic than those who vote. Because it's not true to say that all voters, 70% of all voters support, that's what you're implying.
70% of the people who voted.
Who voted, which is a big difference, because you're leaving out 50% of the population that's telling the public.
What?
No, but you're saying, no, you just told me, he stated a statistic, but the statistic is wrong.
Don't you want to hear what the public has to say?
I do, but here's what I, here's what, no, I do want to hear what the public has to say. After we repeal this, and make it compelling, come and make a compelling thorough investigation, we now have an ordinance on the books that was passed, okay? Without all the information as it relates to public health.
Because it was for public health and medical.
No, it wasn't.
We didn't look at.
You did not, you did not.
We didn't look at the medical because it was legal.
Well, how could you say you did six months worth of research? You looked at everything and how exhaustive it was? You didn't do a Google search of what kind of plant you were going to support that'd be grown down the street? That makes no sense.
Why doesn't it make sense?
Because it's a plant that you support!
When they come before the boards, we would find out what plan.
Oh, so when you buy a car, Mayor, you just say, it's got a steering wheel and wheels, and I'm good? You don't ask, you know what the gas mileage is? You don't ask what kind, you know what the interior color is? You don't ask any of those questions? I mean, what are you saying here? That makes no sense. We have an ordinance, in my opinion, in my opinion.
All I am asking.
In my opinion, we have an ordinance that was passed without all the information. Thank you, Mr. Pinkley, for acknowledging that.
Medical and science. What our ordinance did was to, when it was legalized, was to send.
I got it, I think the public gets it too.
But then why didn't you both know when they came before us? Why didn't you table it and not discuss it?
Because I didn't want to hurt any particular licensee, okay? Without anyone having information about what this is that you voted for. That's why. We owe it to, we owe it, we owe it to the people who want to come before us with licenses to know what the heck we're talking about. We have to do a better job than we did with the war.
Alright, everybody stop yelling.
I'm sorry, this is a very passionate issue for me, Mayor, because I am stunned. I did not expect tonight that people who worked on this thing for six months didn't know where the marijuana plant was. I'm stunned, I don't know even what to say. You represented it, both of you, and I don't mean to, this is what you did, I hear it. Now, more than ever, I think it just calls for repeal.
Why did medicality on the council ask us, why didn't?
I, this calls for repealing now, then we can have a public debate. We can put it on the ballot, if you want to put it as a ballot question. I'm for democracy.
Public, come and talk about it.
I'm for democracy, but we have an ordinance on the books now, inviting people to come in to apply for a license to our town, where we don't know what we're talking about.
Well, this is their work session item.
That's awesome, no, it's great, it's awesome.
So now it's a work session item, so at the next meeting you're going to bring up?
I think we should, I'm going to move to put it on the, for a vote, to repeal, yes.
Is there a alternate way forward?
No, because we now have, no, for me, you're, yes.
I want to talk to the council, give everyone, let me finish my thought before we continue. Is there an alternate way forward? We have, we have people who are on the committee, some of them are not here. I wasn't on council when this was, when this was done.
Neither were you.
No, neither were you, right? Neither of you were not.
No, I was almost dying.
Based on what we know now, is there a possibility to see if the committee would get any other reform, and see if they would change anything based on conversations or what's going on, what they see? Is that, is that a path forward?
Not for me, because we have an ordinance now that we ordered on without any consideration. She just said without the public, without any public health consideration. She just said there was no public health consideration.
We had a public health inspector on the committee.
So what?
But can't we hold? There's no application, can we hold applications until we do this work?
You said, you just said two minutes ago, it's on tape. You didn't take any public health into account. So now we have an ordinance that was passed without any public health into account. You want to support that? You want to support that? Support it. But I would, I move for it to be repealed now, and then we can open it up. We have public debate about it, we can have, we can have a, put it on the ballot for a ballot initiative. We can, I'm for democracy. But I think when you have an ordinance passed based upon a specious committee ad hoc, okay? With other agendas on that committee, obviously there are other agendas, because anyone would Google search, would know, hey, by the way, what are we talking about? We're talking about pot. Oh, let's be Google, what's marijuana, what's it about? Boy, that's a really hard get. You don't need an expert for that, you need a telephone.
We talked about it, we didn't talk about names, so I don't know.
No, what do you mean you didn't talk about names? That's very basic to how this stuff works. It's how it works and how it affects people. If you don't care about how it affects people, you don't ask the question. And you want the money.
Yes, I do.
Okay, well, good. I will not stand, I will stand in the way of anyone who wants money over the deleterious effects it has on young children's brains, on women's pregnancies. I will stand in the way of you and anyone else that, for that purpose. Never will I support money over, over health, ever. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? If not, you can put it on the agenda for the next meeting. Thank you. Any new business?
I got a piece of new business. You know, I'll do, I'll bring it up under my committee reports.
Okay, any old business?
Old business?
Yes.
Just Mrs. Mutter's road in front of her house. Where are we with that?
Oh, we're done.
It's spectacular. It's fantastic.
To lighten up the evening.
So, I mean, so.
No, it's good, it's good.
Alright.
Thank you.
Yes, I got reports, and I could drive my car there now again.
Thank you for.
Is that going into the panel?
Thank you for.
Is that the old business?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for putting up with us.
Is that the old business?
I have some old businesses as well. I get stopped by residents three times a week. I know it's not a town issue, but we have the Burger King property.
Yes.
And they want to know what's going on.
Well, if you could come on the planning board, like I asked you to.
Well, Mayor, I'm sorry I couldn't make it this year, however, maybe next year. But with that said, I believe that there is a timeframe to start construction when you buy a property, so where?
What happened was, it's a strip mall. The planning board approved it, and it's a county road. So they were waiting for county approvals, and I will know tomorrow night at the planning board, I will ask for an update.
Well, thank you.
But it is approved as a strip mall.
But isn't there a timeframe where they have to start construction? So do we know where we are?
But they had to wait though, because of county approval.
So it's based on the county approval, so that's why it's been over three years.
Actually, I had one piece of old business for the Borough Engineer. Last meeting, I had asked you if you could put together a chart, sort of saying what all the gas lines are going to be done, and what lines are going to be done, and paving wise, if you could refer to that.
I've been looking at it, I have the.
Councilman Kovala's on the planning board. We will bring up about the status of the Burger King property and what is going on there.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome. Alright, committee reports. Councilman Tom Miniro, but there, we'll start with you now.
So, we'll start with finance. We had our second finance meeting of the year. That went well. And, but, but we left the meeting, and then, and then we got, we got more information. And so everything we talked about at the meeting changed after, after they got the meeting, after they got the information that we had for the, for the meeting. So we'll, we'll meet again, and we'll, we'll discuss the budget, I'm sure. And that's that for, for the finance. And then, public events, like I always say, thank you so much to everyone that is a member of public events. And they do such, such a wonderful job. And it's a great committee, so please, if you're interested, join the public events committee. We could always use some help. And it's, it's really fun, it's, it's great. So, you know, you get to see things, mostly events revolve around the kids in town. And so you get to see the kids having a great time, and just enjoy being a kid. So if you could, if you could join public events, please give it a thought and sign up. And that's about it, thanks.
And Councilman, spring is around the corner. Are they planning Easter?
Yes, they are planning Easter. I don't have to date, but when we get close.
We've got to think spring.
Yes, I'll do that. And I always say, I'm always dressed warmer for the Easter egg hunt than I am for the Christmas tree line. But, but, but again, it'll be another wonderful.
Maybe this year, you know, because you do the Easter egg hunt, you can work with access for a wall and have. Are you on it?
Yeah. Yeah, we, we've been bringing up at every meeting to make sure that we.
That's good news.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you to the access block.
Alright, Councilman?
I just have one piece of news or business from the Green Team. They'd like to have a couple of signs put up around the towns, so that they can brag about the Oakland receiving silver status. And I just wanted to poll councils and everybody in favor of that, if they come over.
Anybody upset with that?
Very good, okay, I'll bring it back to the committee.
That's all I have. Just one quick, I just wanted to talk about the signs. I'm going to bring up the rotary sign, rotary park. It looks great. They did such a nice job bringing it down, putting rotary, I think they're going to put the rotary symbol on it. But it really looks great. It made that so much prettier, that section of town, really, they did a really nice job.
Yes. That's Rick LaPrae, this is doing.
Thank you.
Alright, Councilman?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Last night we had the Environmental Commission meeting. Evidently, there's been a new interest in bird watching. So they will try to bring a professional bird watcher in down at the Great Oak Park, and introduce people to bird watching. They'd like to remind people to hiking the first Sunday of every month in the lower parking lot on.
Skyline Drive.
Skyline Drive, thank you.
So that's why we can't remember names. It's not that we didn't know it, we just can't remember.
Yeah, it's.
It's one of the effects of marijuana.
We don't smoke. Maybe if we smoked, it would help us.
You must have blew it in my face then. Anyway, remind people, if you want to hike, I mean, I've lived in town 48 years, and there really is some really nice hiking trails on Skyline Drive, at different areas. So if you would like it, to join them, to have a difficult one, and then a pretty easy one, too. That's the first Sunday of every month. I believe the Garden Club will be opening their garden pretty soon.
Oh. Where?
You know, the garden down at Borough, the community gardens.
Oh, the community garden?
Yeah, the community garden.
No, they're still trying, they're still waiting to get applications and everything else.
Yeah, I mean, it's not ready to open tomorrow, but they hope.
Right, right, the Green Team's working on it.
Yeah.
We still may have snow.
Also, they bought rain barrels.
They're working on that, too.
Yeah, hopefully it'll be at the DPW in a month or so. They'd like to have an informal joint meeting with the Green Team. The Environmental Commission and the Green Team meet together, because we kind of have similar interests. So hopefully we combine our efforts and make all of them more, more important. They're also going to work on a display for the carnival. I know it's early. However, my suggestion to them was, decide on your theme. Make your poster or board, information board that you want, get your pamphlets, and this way you're all set. We're also thinking of buying some trail markers. This gentleman on the, on the committee works, I believe, at the county. And he said they're inexpensive, they're less than a half a dollar a piece. So we're going to be taking a look at that. In our email to the board, someone asked about cleaning up Stewart Woods. I don't know, could we, I know it's a Borough property.
Borough.
Mr. Coons, maybe? I mean, I suggested that when we have the townwide cleanup, we do it. But, you know, maybe we can combine that with the DPW.
Well, that was my understanding, just with having a quick conversation with Mike today, was that the EC was going to primarily take that on to reestablish the trails, talk about getting wood chips, and we would reach out to DPW to assist where possible.
Yes, yes, yes. Because I think they said there might be a small tree that might need to be cut down with a chainsaw, which we don't have, obviously. We also need members, anyone interested in becoming a member of the Environmental Commission, please submit your form to Mr. Crowley. First aid, total calls in January, 88 calls they've responded to. 803 had 1,341 miles, 802, 2,024, for a total of 3,605 miles driven in the month of January. And that's it.
Councilman?
I have no report.
I think you're talked out.
No, no, I don't, I don't have any report on it. But I do, I just want to mention one thing. A couple of months ago, I, Councilman Kovala and I walked specific areas of the town with our Borough Administrator, and it was a long list of things. Mostly it's aimed at some of the, lack of a better term, I hate these buzz terms, but sign pollution. And if, if, it's the middle of the winter, and we did it in the nice spring, in the fall time. But if we can get an update on that at the next council meeting, on what some of those items were, you know, what's been done on them.
I thought you were going to walk again.
We will, I'd be glad to, but.
No, I thought a couple of people offered to walk with you. Mr. Coons, didn't you make a list? I know I can't.
No, no, I'm more than happy to do it again, but we, you know, it's, it's just, you know, you come off of the 287, and you hit with this property in front of you, with, you know, it looks like, it looks like one of the old MASH episodes, with, you know, Korea this way, America that way, you know? And I know that some things have been done, I just would like to get an update on it.
Okay.
Okay, Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick reminders from my committees for tonight. From the Oakland Communications Commission, I've been asked to mention again about the Newsletter Committee is searching for additional volunteers to become writers, editors, and photographers. You can contact Chairman Ryan Shortfinger at OCC.Oakland-NJ.org. Also, the Oakland Television Committee is also looking for volunteers, especially if you have editing experience. And also, if you would like to learn more, the Communications Commission has their next meeting scheduled for Monday, March 6th, at 7:30 in the council chambers. From the library, Qi Gong is continuing Saturday mornings at 10 a.m. running into March. No registration is needed, just jump, just drop in. On February 13th, at 4 p.m., they'll have a professional chess instructor for beginner chess players, grades one through five. Registration is required. And on February 21st, at 6:30, they will have an adult art class. Everything will be supplied by the library and instructor. Registration is required for this as well, and you could be, and you can complete it on the library's website. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman?
Alright, I'll make mine quick, and I want to have Russ extend the meeting best 10 o'clock. From recreation standpoint, there's open signups for T-ball for the spring sports. Please go to OaklandRec.org. The current sports that are open are T-ball, softball, golf classes, spring tennis, volleyball across the clinic. So please go to Oakland, OaklandRec.org for sign up for your fall sports. Also, I want to mention last night that the Oakland Rec basketball program took part in senior night in Indian Hills, where the... And thanks to Coach DeCarlo, A.D. Duncan from Indian Hills for inviting the Rec program up, where all the Rec basketball teams are there to watch the Indian Hills Boys Senior Night. That's a very, very nice. On the Shade Tree, we had our meeting last week. We had our meeting on Monday. Very quick update, our new forester starts this week, and in the Shade Tree Commission will be submitting follow-ups to residents who took down trees last year about renovation plans, making sure they follow the ordinance. Those letters will be going out in the next couple of weeks. Also, want to welcome Ron Prefabirds to the Shade Tree Commission. Appreciate it and joining. And then the final update I have is the Busch Plaza. So we received our, formally received our grant for $127,895 for Busch Plaza. The team, the group met and they're putting together a budget where we go. I will be scheduling a meeting with, will be scheduling a committee meeting with Borough Administrator, Coons, and our engineer to get that going forward. I will also be working with DPW, and Anthony's already said he would support me any way possible on how we can start getting the park moving right, in the right direction. And then Engineer, we'll be talking to you more about moving some lighting structures if you move on a light pole in the park. But the team had a good meeting. They've got a design going, so we're looking to push that forward.
And I want to talk to you about that, because I'm working with the Chamber, the new Oakland Chamber of Commerce.
Yes, they call me as well, Mayor. They invite me everything, so absolutely. So I think we have a good functioning committee there. We can start making progress by the end of the year. I mean, have something tangible see by the end of the year if everything plays out right.
Great, thank you. That's it?
That's it.
It's 9:56. Very quickly. Most votes to the public.
So who?
Second? Anyone wish to speak? Go ahead. Before we do that, committee, is there...
Motion to extend to 10:10?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I...
Okay. You don't have to rush.
Okay. William Sisti, 12 Eagle Crest, speaking on behalf of the TV Committee. I just wanted to just kind of let everyone know, and all the viewers at home, just kind of what our schedule is for the TV. You can watch repeats of this on FiOS and Altice every day at 1:00 a.m., every day at 1:00 a.m., 12:00 p.m., and 7:00 p.m.
Wow.
And on...
That's the, that's the regional?
Regional, Ramapo Indian Hills.
And when is that on?
4:30 a.m. on weekdays.
What, 30 a.m.?
So I was probably fit. You've got to record it, or 12:00 p.m. on weekends. Saturday or Sunday, 12:00 p.m., before you cut the grass. Let's see. We have movies, matinee movies, every day at 4:30. We're, this week it's Love, Laugh, and Andy Hardy. It's a beautiful thing. Originally, this was called Public Access TV back when it first started. We have two contributors to public access, which means anyone could make a recording as long as it meets the town standards, we will broadcast it. So we currently have on the public access, the version of the Ramapo Indian Hills Board of Education meeting, and we schedule those throughout the week. Currently, the board buzz is on 9:00 a.m. every day, and the OLPH is on 10:00 a.m. every day. Also, we have something from Medicaid. It's a medical topic show. It's called CMSNU. It's pretty basic TV. I don't know who watches it, but it's on there. It's supplied to us by Medicaid, I guess another government agency, but again, it's just...
A little more of us are getting to watch that.
Yeah, yeah. I watched a couple. And there's also 8:00 a.m., there's historical programming, Bond Force Legacy. It's a historical program, not about Oakland, but a history program, so a lot of interesting things.
Before you sit down?
Yes.
I know you mentioned OLPH.
Right.
Okay? But any other religious organization in town can submit?
Just send us the tape.
If someone asked me the question, why do we only allow OLPH? It's not only OLPH.
They're the only ones that submit something.
Well, they have the cameras, and they do tape. I don't know if the other...
They can do it on their phone. Send us a file. It doesn't have to be like professional quality.
Yeah, so any church in town can...
You can record in your backyard off your phone, send us the files of the birds in your backyard, and all the deer, and it'll meet the criteria. We're obligated as public access, the public, has access to TV.
I know someone said that to me once. How come we only allow... And I said, no, we allow...
We don't allow, we have...
We went through that years ago.
Yeah. We have broadcasters, just like the regular TV station.
Mr. Sisti, how often does Indian Hills Board of Education meeting run?
The actual meeting, it's...
4:30 a.m.
4:30 a.m. every day.
12:00 p.m.
And 12:00 p.m. on weekends.
Is there any way you can put that in a more favorable time slot, especially because everybody's really paying attention to education these days?
It's a long meeting. We'd have to like...
Well, you said they could tape it.
Well, they could tape it. We put it on 4:30, so at least it's on every day. Someone wants to DVR it. We'd have to maybe, we got to juggle the schedule and eliminate.
Just something to look at, that's all.
Okay.
Well, it's on the weekends, too, at 12.
Yeah, on Saturday at 10, you can watch it at 12:00 p.m. when you're home. You and the kiddies.
That's noon. That's noon.
Noon. 12:00 p.m., noon.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And digest your lunch at the same time.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So I want to address two things. The first is the cannabis ordinance. And Mr. McCann, I'm actually talking to you, so I found that your commentary and the way that you presented your comments was a little bit, I was taken aback by it. I understand you have your opinion, but you represent 13,000 residents, and we don't all agree with you.
Okay. What specifically did you disagree with?
Well, first of all, your points didn't make any sense. Cannabis is legal. It's marijuana is legal.
What does that got to do with the points I made?
That it...
No, I wanted to be clear.
Well, you're not letting me speak.
No, I asked you...
And isn't this my time to speak, right?
I asked you a question. What did you disagree with?
But then you didn't let me finish my answer. You just had...
Partially.
Alright, stop debating.
I just want to be clear.
Afterwards, you could debate.
I want to be clear. So when you say...
Please begin to listen and hear from us about what we want you guys as council to do. So when you say, I don't care, I'm going to repeal this, that wasn't what was presented. What was presented was, can you guys, are you willing to have a town meeting and hear from the residents that you guys represent? That's what you should do. And if that town meeting results in everybody agrees with you and they don't want it, great. But you might find out that the town doesn't agree with you. And if they don't agree with you, you can't just vote because you're against it. You represent us, not you. I'm not done.
Okay.
Okay?
I'm listening.
You also said that you don't care about money. And for me, that's alarming. We have sewer issues.
That's not what I said.
I am not done. I'm not done. Please let me finish.
No, but you don't, no, you can't misrepresent what I said.
You're interrupting.
No, don't misrepresent what I said. Don't put words in my mouth.
Alright, let her finish, and then you can...
Won't you have time to correct what I said? Will you let me finish?
Alright, stop debating.
Don't put words in my mouth.
It's 10:03.
Say what I said, not what you think I said.
Just a minute. Let her speak. It's public comment. At the end, take notes. That's what we all do. Take notes and then you can respond.
I don't have to take notes for this.
The town has so many issues that we have to pay for. Sewer, water, the downtown area that needs to be upgraded.
And you live on Windy Ridge.
I do. That's what I'm going to say now. And the Patriots Way Bridge. All of that has to be paid for, and we don't have the money for it, and the taxpayers don't want to pay for it. So for you to ignore that this is a source of income, and maybe it is, maybe it isn't, but it has to be, you have to talk to the residents, right? So don't say that the money doesn't matter. It does. It does matter, and it matters to us.
That's not what I said.
And I'm asking you guys, instead of jumping to repeal the cannabis ordinance, have the town meeting. Listen to the town, okay? With that said, we were promised an update on the Patriots Way Bridge, and that, we didn't hear about it. You said it was one of two things, Patriots Way Bridge and the water, and I was waiting.
Yes, he was supposed to make an announcement. You're right.
Well, you're on, John.
Alright, but it's still, it's still public.
So we'll get to that?
Yeah.
And then will I be able to ask questions if I have any?
Afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
I'll give you my card.
Okay, I have to respond. First of all, I didn't say I didn't care about money. I said, if you have to choose between money and public health, I would side with women's public health every time. That's what I said. You misrepresented what I said. I also, I also didn't challenge the legality at all on any level of marijuana in the state of New Jersey. What I challenged, if you were listening carefully, was the concept that we had a committee that said they did all this research, okay? And they passed the, they passed an ordinance without knowing where the marijuana plant was.
Respectfully, you did Google research.
No, I didn't. No, no, excuse me.
That's even worse than talking to somebody who has no...
Stop it. Wait a minute, it's over.
It's my time. Don't tell me what I did. I didn't do Google research.
Stop debating.
Excuse me.
It's 10:05.
I'm finishing. I didn't, don't tell me what I did and didn't do. You weren't with my computer with me. I didn't do Google research. This is an issue I've researched for probably, my daughter's sitting right there, maybe for 20 years. It may be if you researched the public health of the NIH and the deleterious effects on women, you would be enlightened as to the unequivocal facts that it causes psychosis in babies, and problems with women that are pregnant, it causes psychosis in children, and there's no medicinal proven purpose for marijuana, except for what they think is in people's minds. That's what the latest science shows, but you don't know that. And that's not a Google search. Know what that involves?
You're telling me that no medical marijuana...
No, 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 no. No debate.
Can we stop the debates?
No, I was finishing what I said.
No debate.
I'm finishing what I... It's not a debate. She said I said something.
No, she's talking, no.
No, she said I said something, and that I didn't say, okay? And I didn't say I was not for listening to the people. If you heard what I said. This ordinance is bogus because it was passed based upon no one doing their homework. That's what I said. And I said, if after we do that, you want to put it on the ballot for this year, and you want to have a town hall, I'm all for democracy. That's what I said. Isn't that what I said? Isn't that true? Isn't that what I really said? Yes or no?
No debate. You can talk to her afterwards.
It's on tape.
Okay. Anybody else? If not, most to close.
Most to close.
Second.
All in favor? Bills to be paid.
Bills to, bills to be paid. So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
If you read the bills list and looked at it, you can vote. Roll call. Councilmembers Kamala?
Yes.
McCann?
Yes.
Pignatelli?
Yes.
Saliani?
Yes.
Zizinski?
Yes.
Talmini?
Yes.
Speaking of public health, we have the Mayor's Wellness Campaign Blood Drive on February 28th from 12:00 noon to 6:00 p.m. at the Senior Center, and you can register for this at vitaland.com. That's for the blood drive on February 28th from 12:00 to 6:00 at the Senior Center. More information, you can always call Borough Hall, go to the website, it's on the website, and it'll be on Facebook, on our Facebook page. And at this, I want to turn a motion to adjourn.
So I move. Second?
All in favor?
Alright.
Next meeting is Wednesday, February 22nd at 7:00 p.m.
Yeah. Yeah. We're going to do that.
Very stimulating.